I hear that. Good evening. I'd like to call the David County Commissioners Meeting of June 7, 2021, to order. This time, I would ask Commissioner Jones to lead us in the invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's pray. Father, we come here tonight, we thank you for your mercy, your grace, and your goodness. We thank you, Father, for placing us in this freest of all lands. Lord, we give you praise and glory for putting in the hearts of men and women to serve in our military, to keep us free, here locally, to serve in law enforcement, our EMS, our fire departments, to keep us safe, our schools, to educate our children. And, Father, we just simply thank you for making this a blessed place to raise a family. So, Lord, tonight, give us wisdom, give us discernment, give us boldness and courage to carry out the mission that you called us to. And, Father, we'll give you praise, glory, and honor. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
Okay. If we could all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Appreciate everyone coming out this evening on this questionable weather night. But, anyway, thanks for being here. At this time, we move to the ethics and conflicts disclosure. Mr. Vogler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I present the North Carolina General Statute 168-86 and the David County Board of Commissioners' Code of Ethics adopted December the 2nd, 2019. I would ask each of you, before you adopt the agenda tonight, if there's any actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest, respect any matter on the agenda which you might be voting on tonight. If so, please speak up and let the board know at this time before you adopt the agenda. Seeing no one speak up, Mr. Chairman, I would conclude there's no actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest of any board member.
All right. With that, we will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Send me, Mr. Chairman.
Have a second.
Second.
Second. All in favor? The agenda is adopted. All right, we'll move to the public comment period. Mr. Vogler.
This is the time for public comment. For anyone who wishes to come forward and speak, you will have three minutes. I will be timing you as timer. I'll be holding up cards showing when you have two minutes remaining, one minute remaining, 30 seconds remaining, and when you should stop. At this point in time, anyone who is on the list would be called upon in the order in which they signed up. You may come forward and speak as I call your name. I would ask that each person that has come forward to speak, if they would, position the microphone and state your full name so it goes on to the recording that we have as far as the minutes, I mean, the meeting itself. And you may speak on anything you wish to. However, you cannot ask questions of the board and expect any type of back and forth with the board. With that being said, the first individual that has signed up is William Vaughn. Mr. Vaughn, if you wish to come forward.
William Vaughn, 158 Eagles Landing Lane. Point of order, Mr. Vogel. I had been informed that this period is separate from the public hearing comment period to follow.
That is correct.
So you can get three minutes here, and then you can also speak later today.
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay, I'm here to speak, oh, names start to start. I'm here to speak about the planning board, the action on zoning amendment 2001-21. And I'll just read the proposed amendment, because I was there when they read it. And I'm telling you, it is a tale of two cities, okay? "The amendment promotes public health, safety, and general welfare." It does not. "Is consistent with all applicable adopted plans and considers the action to be a reasonable and in the public interest." It is not. "That the approval furthers the goals, objectives, actions, maps, and policies of the comprehensive plan and growth enhancement strategy, because it is in harmony," it is not, "with the surrounding area and uses and fits with the county's future land use plans." It does not, except maybe for the first 74 pages of the comp plan. Page 75 somehow, figure 23 slipped in, in between the recommendations of the Triad Council, whose slides and agendas from their working groups became the comp plan, if you look at them very closely. "And the comprehensive plan is a primary growth area," that is a true statement, "but it's also a primary growth area for housing and, like, commercial, as well as industrial." And as I said in my letters to each of you individually, and I hope you take each one of those, to take each one of these clauses and use it maybe as a thanking point for each one of the clauses that has been presented to you by the planning board. Everything is equal. The same thing that applies to industrial area also applies to, like, commercial. It applies to housing. Mrs. Gallaway made a comment, kind of assertive, that we don't need nor $300,000 houses in this county. Well, the price point now, if you check, is 294K, no matter what you do. This is an opportunity to have some senior housing, you know, patio housing, to have some lower price point for young families, to have multi-use types things, to put in a doctor's office, dentist's office, maybe a small shopping center, things such as that that will enhance the corridor from Bermuda Run down. That corridor is there. Mr. Burrell will tell you, it's been coveted over by industry for years. That train left 30 years ago, because your surrounding growth has now kind of dictated the 158 corridor to be, for some professionals and commuters, places that people will go. Other people in this county who have also worked in industry for years will tell you that a McDonald's will hire more people in some of these industries now, because industry is so automated. I'll have further things to say later, but y'all, I think you all know my points, because I did write you individually. If you read it, I thank you, and I wish you to consider it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Todd Naylor.
Counsel, I'm speaking for a group. Does that mean I get five minutes, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Vaughn, appreciate the opportunity. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of at least eight fire departments, most are represented here in the galley. And we definitely appreciate the fact that you guys have given consideration to allocation increase for our fire departments this year. That being said, we don't agree particularly with the way that you talked about in the planning session about dividing this money up. So what we would ask that you do is approve the allocation tonight, along with the budget, and give us an opportunity, all the stakeholders involved in this allocation, all the fire departments, to sit down with you and kind of work through the way that this money is going to be divided. There's multiple conversations that we've had about this with you guys, we've had amongst ourselves. It's a very complicated piece, and I know that you would agree with that statement. The last time that the lower funded departments had an increase was in 2006. And there are three larger departments in the county, of course, that are in a position where they get an increase every year because the tax base grows. Some of us have really been left behind a long way. And so what happens is, our equipment costs the same, our manpower is the same issues as it does in the big departments. So what we're asking for is just not an equal share, but a fair share. If you can get us to the point where we can survive, then we can help our neighboring departments when we're called upon for automatic aid or mutual aid. That's a big, we just went through an ISO inspection that's called a method three inspection. We're dependent on each other now more so than we've ever been before. And when you start looking at, well, okay, maybe we'll establish a service district. If you establish a service district for each department, a penny is worth a lot less in some areas than it is others. So some of us would have to have multiple pennies to create the money that we're getting now. For example, towards Colombe, their tax rate would have to be 21%, 21 cent on 100, to maintain what they've got right now. Mine in Farmington would have to be five cent. And so that's a large discrepancy to ask taxpayers in David County to provide for, if you look in that individual districts. If you do a service district overlay for the county, you can take that money, you can spend it where it needs to be spent. I know you've made the comments that, well, we need to keep the money in the districts where it's generated. Well, there's some validity to that, and then there's some negative to that, because my district has the three biggest schools in David County. I only collect fire tax off of about 54% of my district, because the rest of the buildings in my district are exempt or deferred. Some of the larger districts, they collect taxes off 80, 85% of their district, because they don't have those taxes in buildings. And then they also have residences in industry to make up the difference. So, as I said, it's a very complex deal. I think that there's a way we can all come together to give the smaller departments an increase, to get them to the point where we can survive and where we can provide the same service to the taxpayers in our district that the other districts get as well. If everybody's paying the same fire tax amount, four cent in their district, they're paying the same property tax, why shouldn't they expect the same service? There's a lot of things that go on in districts like mine, for example. When you got the ball field there, you got the schools. Graduation this weekend consumed a lot of manpower from a lot of different agencies. So please consider meeting with us and working through this thing, and not just throwing a Band-Aid fix out there. This is a great opportunity for us to fix the problem that we've had for the last 15 years, and have everybody continue to grow in a point, excuse me, I'm reading the time sharing over there, but to have everybody to grow in a way that we can maintain what we are out here to do. And I appreciate your time and consideration for that, and I hope you will make the right decision tonight.
The next individual is Don, and it looks like it's Vanoy. I may be misreading it. Is there a Don in the room that signed up? Vernon, okay, that could be that also. Come on forward. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, commissioners and residents. My name is Don Vernon. I've lived in the farm community for 24 years, in David County for 31 years. I've lived in my area there, and I've seen a lot of changes take place over these few short years. When I first lived there, very little traffic down Putting Ridge Road. Putting Ridge Road, I'm the first house on the left after Farmington Road. So I see EMS, I see the traffic coming down the fire department. Now that we have EMS up the street, we have a lot more traffic from that. But however, the school is also down the street. We have, Putting Ridge Road is used as a shortcut from a lot of the areas on the northern side of Cana Road, all the way up 601. They use that roadway, Putting Ridge, as a shortcut to avoid the traffic issues down at Farmington Road with the roundabouts, I-40 backing up, the school issues, all of that. But however, all I'm saying is, I'm retired, and I don't really have to contend with that any longer, but I can see a lot of the changes that have taken place. All the, with the boom in the building industry and road construction, there's a lot more gravel trucks traveling down the highway, too. Most of, most of Farmington Road, the speed limit is 55 miles per hour. And so that being said, those dump trucks, full of gravel, you may say, well, they're not traveling that fast, but by the time they get to Putting Ridge Road, they are traveling fairly fast, and they try to stop, end of that, make that turn, and make their shortcut way to the other parts of the county. A lot of these, we also can't forget also, school buses also travel this highway. They use Putting Ridge Road as a, also as a way to get their students back and forth. And all of that traffic combined together has just really caused a lot of issues to the area residents. So I will be speaking later at the, during the public hearing for more information. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Jack Coontz.
I'm retired North Carolina National Guard Platoon Sergeant, Jack Coontz. In memory and honor of all our members of the armed forces, who have paid the ultimate sacrifice to their country, and whose names are inscribed on a veteran memorial on the square in Oxford, for their families and citizens of David County. I would like to thank you for repairing the memorial for the damage when the memorial was struck by lightning, and to thank Andrew Medwell, and for his work, and have his staff, for the work that they have coordinated on the project. I passed the memorial last night around 9:00 PM, and I saw three people walking around looking at it. I am very proud of the memorial, and I know that you are also. I will thank you.
Thank you. Billy McDaniel. Billy McDaniel. Billy, I noticed that you and your wife signed up, or both of you going to speak?
No, I didn't know I signed up.
You what?
I didn't know I signed up.
Okay.
Hey, that's all right.
Your name's on here, anyway. Maybe your wife signed it.
Yeah. Anyway, on the fire department, what I've been hearing about it money-wise, kind of like, we need to, to me, you need to split the money equally through the fire department, that way everybody be alike. And I appreciate y'all's help on the board and the budget. Thank you, each and every one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Billy. And you may want to talk to your wife. Next is Lisa Motley.
Hello. I'm a resident of Farmington Road, just live past the high school, and have lived there for 19 years, like several other people that have lived in the county. We've watched a lot of change, but most of the change has not happened on Farmington Road. It's been on 801 and 601. Those roads are designed for heavier traffic and more opportunity zones for place businesses, restaurants, et cetera. Farmington Road, in certain times of the day, is a bottleneck. It is like one of the main entrances, exits to 40. It is, there's accidents. I hear the sirens going down the road all the time, ambulances, other things. The traffic circle went in, it alleviated some. I've been down there when it's been a bottleneck. So it hasn't resolved everything. I just don't think that an industrial complex is what is needed in, on the 158 Farmington exit that would benefit the county. I don't want it to look like, you know, 52, Highway 52 in Winston. You know, it may look good in the beginning, but let's think about it, over the years, those things degrade, they don't stay the same, businesses come and go. I just think that it is a bad choice to go the industrial route, like with the others. I would think that, you know, small commercial enterprises, residents, some mixed use might be a better use of that land. The land is gorgeous, and I just am concerned with traffic. Students driving, people driving, just on and off, trucks coming from Ashley, trucks getting on and off the freeway, going back and forth. I just think if you add to that, you are just creating a situation for the residents, along with the fact that you have businesses running 24/7 and the potential noise complications that we would experience as residents. So with that, I would like for you to seriously consider either deferring the decision or just denying it to, and leaving it as something that's a little bit more compatible with the area now. And I think that would be a better use of space, and I think for David County, I think that would be what is more desirable, and keep it a more desirable county for people to want to come here. Thank you.
Next is Alice Brown.
I'm speaking on behalf of a group, and I thank you for this opportunity. My name is Alice Brown, and for the record, I'm speaking on behalf of a group of citizens who have the utmost respect and appreciation for our local law enforcers. Around the time of our NAACP Unity Rally before the November election, Sheriff Hartman welcomed me into his office, where we had a one-on-one conversation. Since seeking justice is biblical, it was encouraging to see law and order and criminal justice ideologies can coexist here in David County. Last Tuesday at the town board meeting, our president, Reverend Clark, said something that Commissioner Jones had said earlier. One, transparency in decision-making is, it builds trust. Two, Reverend Clark also appealed for various trainings for officers, including how to deal with mental health issues. And three, the need for Spanish-speaking law enforcers, which the town has had. When our organization was founded 112 years ago, the majority at the table were white people concerned about the lynching of colored people. We saw that same kind of concern from diverse populations around the world after the murder of George Floyd. On a national webinar recently, police reform was addressed. The term "defund" was never used. For anyone who would make this a political issue, this is not our agenda on the local level either. When I stated our situation, losing the police department because of a $600,000 shortfall, the reply was, "To track how the $1.3 million in savings is spent. We plan to do that." Accountability in saving money is important, but accountability in saving lives is a must. And since human behavior cannot be legislated, accountability may be our only hope. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And, Mr. Chairman, that's the last one that signed up.
All right. Thank you for those comments. All right, next we...
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. This may not be the appropriate time to do so, but I would like to do this, if this would please the board. Because the allocation of this $903,000 is going to have such a major financial impact on our volunteer fire departments, and it's immensely possible that this decision will determine the survival of fire service as we know it. Our base departments have operated without an increase in county funding for many years, and this proposed increase has the possibility of being the only increase that may be available for several future years. Bringing all of these voices to the table together is the most transparent, revealing, and efficient process to ensure that we make the very best decisions for the protection of our citizens regarding fire service. That being said, I would like to make a motion that we conduct an informal work session meeting that includes our full Board of Commissioners, along with representatives from each department that is represented in the allocation equation.
Okay. So that is a motion.
Please.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second to conduct an informal work session between our board and representatives from the fire service. Would you like to... What's your expectations of that meeting? When are you thinking?
Well, we would have to do it pretty soon, before the July 1st checks were cut. So we'd have to get it on the calendar pretty soon, if we have an available time. And it would probably need to be in the evening to accommodate our working fire department personnel.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none, I guess the, well, let's go ahead and vote. So, hearing none, all in favor of the motion, raise your hand. That passes. So I guess, Mr. Vaughn, if you could maybe work up some dates, and I don't know who's going to be representing the fire service, I guess maybe you coordinate that through Mr. Webb, Cameron?
Yes, sir. We'll be glad to. Yes, sir.
Brian Spuck from the Fire Association.
All right. We'll look forward to that. All right, the next item on the agenda is a presentation of the 20, 630-20 audit, and I'll ask Ms. West to come forward.
Yes, tonight, we have Kelly Gooderham, who is Audit Manager with Martin Starnes, to present our fiscal year 2019-2020 audit. Our audit is available on our website, on the finance page, and we've also included it in your agenda packet this evening.
Good evening, everybody. You doing okay today, except for the rain? Do I just press the space? Is that right? Oh, good. Okay. So we will get started. Thank you. Okay. We've prepared the following PowerPoint to present what we feel to be some of the more pertinent facts of your fiscal year 20 audit. Your report, sorry about that. Your report has been submitted and approved by the LGC with a clean, unmodified opinion. We've had the pleasure of working with Robin and her finance staff, who've been very helpful, and we all appreciate their time and efforts during the course of the audit. and we all appreciate their time and efforts during the course of the audit. This first slide shows a side-by-side comparison of the general fund revenues and expenditures, excluding your other financing sources and uses. Revenues exceeded expenditures in the current year by two hundred and thirty-three, two hundred and thirty thousand, as opposed to two thousand nineteen, which was a little over a million. This slide shows a four-year comparison of your total general fund fund balance. As previously mentioned, revenues were more than expenditures by two hundred and thirty thousand, but after taking into account your other financing sources and uses, which consisted of transfers to other funds of 1.5 million, proceeds from installment debt of 596,000, and proceeds from the sale of capital assets of 235,000, this left the general fund with an overall decrease in fund balance of 514,000. This slide shows the five classifications of your fund balance. First, we have your non-spendable, which is basically not in cash form. Your restricted, which is an external restriction for things like laws or grantors. Your committed fund balance was an, which is an internal constraint at the highest board level. Your assigned fund balance, which is also an internal constraint, but a lower level than your restricted. And then your unassigned, which has no internal or external constraints. This slide shows the available fund balance calculation, which is a calculation the LGC uses to compare units across the state. This next slide shows Davie County's actual available fund balance classification. So first, we start with your total fund balance of eighteen point four million, less your non-spendables, which includes inventories and your long-term note receivable, less your stabilization by state statute of five point eight million, to arrive at your available fund balance of twelve point three million, which was an overall decrease over the prior year of two point one million. The decrease was primarily due to an increase in your stabilization by state statute and an increase in your non-spendables. Another calculation utilized by the LGC is your available fund balance as a percentage of expenditures and transfers out. The LGC advises roughly eight percent, equates to one month's worth of expenditures on hand. So as you can see by this, yep, that's right. As you can see by this, Davie County had roughly two to three months' worth of expenditures on hand at year-end, which was comparable to the prior year. The next few slides goes into a breakdown of your top three general fund revenues and expenditures. First, in the green shaded columns, we have your tax revenues, which includes your out-of-labor property tax revenues, as well as your local option sales tax. This saw an overall increase over the prior year of 1.6 million, or four percent. Then we have your intergovernmental revenue in the red columns, which saw an overall decrease of three hundred and forty-seven thousand, or five percent. And lastly, your charges for services are in the blue columns, which saw an overall increase of three hundred and forty-three thousand, or nine percent. Next are your top three general fund expenditures. First, in green, we have public safety, which saw an overall decrease of six hundred and nineteen thousand, or four percent. Then in red, we have your education expenditures, which saw an overall decrease of two hundred and twenty thousand, or one percent. And then in the blue columns, you have your human services, which saw an overall increase of two hundred and thirty-six thousand, or three percent from the prior year. Now we'll go over some operating data between the enterprise funds. Water and sewer fund had operating revenues of seven point one million, operating expenditures of four point eight million, with an overall net operating income of two point three million for fiscal year twenty. Your solid waste fund operating revenues was a hundred and seventy-one thousand, operating expenditures was four hundred and seventy-nine thousand, with an overall net operating loss of three hundred and eight thousand. Then we have your cash flows from operations comparison between the two enterprise funds and current and prior year. Water sewer fund saw an overall decrease in net cash provided by operations of two hundred and ninety-two thousand. Solid waste net cash used by operations increased from prior year of fifty-two thousand. Your unrestricted net position in your water sewer fund increased of roughly four hundred and four million. And then your solid waste increased as well of roughly thirty-eight thousand. Are there any questions?
Don't have any questions about the numbers, but were there any findings?
Yes, sir, there was. There was one finding related to the timeliness of the audit.
Was that not an LGC issue for the state?
I don't know how to answer that.
That was because of the challenges we had this fiscal year because of COVID and the turnover in management. We were unable to finish the audit testing that we usually do in August and September, just due to the timing of those things.
All right, anybody have any questions for Ms... Get your name right, Ms. Gooderham.
Gooderham.
Gooderham, I'm sorry. Or, or Ms. West. All right, thank you for that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so next we have five public hearings. The first one is a zoning amendment for Farmington Road. And so this is a public hearing, so I will turn it over to Mr. Vogler to share with us the rules of engagement.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. And now, there will be a presentation first by Mr. Meadwell with regards to what is happening, and then after the presentation, the board will take comments, public comments, from anyone who wishes to speak. You will come forward, you will state your name for the record, and then you'll make your comments. Again, there will not be any back and forth between the board and the individuals that are speaking. It will be during this public hearing session, you will have public comment time. There is no time limit at that point in time, though. Thank you.
Mr. Meadwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before you nod, you have zoning map amendment two thousand twenty-one dash zero-two. This is a request by Wells Fargo Bank to rezone approximately one hundred and fifty-nine acres of a two hundred and one acre parcel of property that is currently zoned R twenty quality design overlay and highway business quality design overlay to the general industrial quality design overlay. The subject piece of property is located at twenty-seven seventy-seven U.S. Highway one fifty-eight and is further described as the northern portion of Davie County Tax Map F five fifty-three. Included in your agenda packages, you will see a current zoning map of the piece of property, which does show the R twenty designation, as well as a small portion of the property that is on highway business. Each of these were zoned that way in nineteen seventy-three, when the county adopted zoning. But also, as you look at the map, to the north of the property, you see Interstate forty, as well as highway industrial and, or heavy industrial and heavy industrial conditional district, which is the Vulcan piece of property, as well as some highway business property across the interstate. To the west of the piece, you see highway business, as well as general industrial zoning. Also included in your package is a aerial photograph of the piece of property. As you can see, the property is currently being used for agricultural purposes. However, there is a single-family dwelling also located on the piece. The area is identified on the future land use map for, in the Davie County Conference Plan as industrial. Our growth enhancement strategy map identifies the area as a primary growth area. As I mentioned, the subject piece was initially zoned in nineteen seventy-three. The proposed zoning for general industrial, this district is established for manufacturing, distribution, warehousing, processing, and related uses whose operating characteristics limit their effect on adjacent uses. The applicant has indicated that they would like to do a planned industrial district, which may be a mix of both industrial and commercial, as well as some retail-type uses as well. Utilities, public water is available to the site. However, sewer is in close proximity and would have to be extended to serve the site, or if sewer were not available, then the site would have to be served by private on-site individual septic systems. Issues to consider, the board may not consider any specific use of the piece of property, but all those possible uses that are allowed within the general industrial district. The board may approve or deny or defer the request for additional consideration, but the board should consider the following and make in its recommendation. The property's location to other commercial and industrial uses surrounding the I forty interchange, the property's potential for an industrial, commercial-type uses, the property's potential as a residential use. If the rezoning is approved, any new structure or uses still have to go before our technical review committee. That committee is made up of various staff and state departments to ensure that compliance is made with the development regulations of the Davie County zoning ordinance. Also, to consider whether the proposed reclassification is consistent with the purposes, goals, objectives, and policies of Dr. Plansworth area, and whether the proposed reclassification is consistent with the overall character of existing development in the area. The planning board did hear this at its May eighteenth meeting and did vote unanimously to approve approval and recommend approval to you. Board action that should be considered tonight is either one, move that the following statement be adopted in support of a motion to approve; two, move that the following statement be adopted in support of a motion to deny the request; or three, defer the request for additional consideration. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back over to you, and if the board has any questions for me right now, I'd be more than glad to answer those.
Thank you, Mr. Meadwell. Anyone have any questions?
What's the balance of land from the two-one-one fifty-nine? What, is he going to stay in what it's currently zoned?
That is correct. That is correct. And that, if you look at the map, Mr. Blakely, that is actually south...
Just the front piece?
Yeah.
Oh, the front piece.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Is the residence occupied?
Excuse me?
Is the residence occupied at this time?
I do believe so. I do believe someone is resident there now.
So are they, are they part of the party that is selling the property, or would they be needing, they will have to find new housing because they're leasing?
I have no idea.
Any other questions for Mr. Meadwell? Okay, all right, thank you. So this is a public hearing, and so at this time, if anyone would like to come and speak for or against the project, please step to the microphone.
Mr. Chairman, at this point in time, you've announced this is a public hearing pursuant to Chapter one fifty-three eight of North Carolina General Statutes, Chapter one fifty-five of the Davie County Code and Ordinance, this board is conducting this public hearing of the proposed amendment upon application of Wells Fargo Bank for the rezoning of approximately one hundred and fifty-nine acres from residential twenty quality design overlay and highway business quality design overlay to general industrial quality design overlay. Said property being located twenty-seven seventy-seven in C, or North, U.S. Highway one fifty-eight, inscribed as northern portion of tax parcel F five fifty-three. You notice that this public hearing was advertised, ran in a local paper, but general circulation in the county is required by law, as noted and noted in the public hearing included in your agenda packet. Now you come forward to speak.
That was a little too quick, right? Thank you for being here tonight. Number one, thank you for what you do, serving the people of this community. My name's Terry Brawley. I do economic development here for the county. My job is to create jobs and grow the tax base. I've been here forty-two years. I've shown, I've shown that site for the last twenty years as a potential industrial site. Today's world is different than it used to be. Industry today are not going to sit and wait for a piece of property to be rezoned, and most of the time, they're not going to wait for a building to be built there. They're going to have to have speculative buildings. Most companies are chasing a contract today. They need to be in operation within ninety days. If you're going to compete in today's world market, you have to be prepared. You have to have these sites ready to go. This site is right on the, the North Main Street of North Carolina, I forty. It has key infrastructure that's to the site. The county has less than one percent of your acreage that's zoned industrial. As a matter of fact, today, in the, in, in the county today, in your jurisdiction, there are no industrial sites that are properly zoned without industries already on them. We went to Stemland Associates in Winston-Salem to bring a professional land use planner and a professional architect into this formula, and Luke Dickey is with us tonight to speak further about that site. But thank you for your consideration.
Good evening, Commissioners. Luke Dickey with Stemland Associates, six oh one North Trade Street, Suite two hundred, Winston-Salem, two seven one zero one. I thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening in regards to this planned industrial site. Hope you'll support it. As Mr. Brawley had mentioned, this is a very large tract of land, one hundred and fifty-nine acres, located with major access to the major transportation corridor of I forty. It's right next to, with, the infrastructure is there on Farmington Road that has been improved for what is going on for the widening there, and also in regards to the circle, as with that media access. This is, comprehensive plan, as mentioned by Mr. Meadwell, has identified this site as an industrial development. It's been in the two thousand and five plan and also updated in the two thousand nineteen, showing this as being industrial. Water and sewer is now available to the site. It's been extended for the new government center. It's come across the way, so we have a good portion of this site that can access sewer. And if we can't access sewer, we might have the opportunity to do a pump station so we can get to the gravity feed portion of there, or otherwise, of course, we will have to do septic systems on, on that side. As also mentioned, there is the quality overlay district that still encompasses the site, so that is the buffer against the views from one fifty-eight and the surrounding neighbors for what it does. So we have to make sure we screen the parking appropriately and accommodate that in the code. Want to point out that the eastern portion of this site does have a large natural buffer area due to wetlands and the floodplain, which we cannot, of course, do any development within that. So that actually represents about thirty-six acres of the total one hundred and fifty-nine acres of that, so that is a nice transition, basically going from the Farmington Road to this site, and then further east, so we have that natural divide. This will follow, obviously, within the newly adopted GI district, which helps simplify the code of what can go in this area instead of the I one, I two, I three, I four, and so it helps to make it more manageable to, to review. We did have a neighborhood meeting with outreach. We had sixteen property owners attend that, and then we also had six phone calls from neighbors that could not attend, so twenty-two total. In that, we kind of showed a representation of a conceptual sketch of how this could be developed out. Again, we are asking for general industrial use on this right now, so we're not bringing a site plan in for that review, but that envisioned is kind of having a connection to Farmington Road off of the new drive that's connected to the government center, and then have an access off of Highway one fifty-eight. Any connections that we make, of course, to the public streets will be reviewed by NC DOT, and in those, they will tell us what type of improvements we have to do in terms of turn lanes and stacking and everything else that come for safe movements on and off of at this time. Of course, with this, you know, as Terry had mentioned, it is all about really getting something ready for development from an industrial standpoint, because they are really wanting to move now. Stemland Associates does a lot of work with Duke Energy and their site rating this program, looking at sites, and we've looked at sites throughout all of North Carolina. This is a fantastic site in term of the acreage. It's one property owner, and so a lot of these you don't have to assemble, so we have one hundred and fifty-nine acres readily available. Key transportation routes, again, utilities are located to the site, and it's just a prime example of a site that can be developed with limited wetlands that really kind of divide up the main central core of this, so it's a, and also the topography is very well situated for industrial development here. Again, we had a unanimous recommendation for approval from Planning Board, and hope that you support this this evening, and we have to answer any questions if you have at this moment. Thank you.
I have a transparency question if I may... I have a transparency question, if I may.
Yes.
That's the second time, because I've watched the Planning Board meeting, that I've heard you state that it's a single owner, single property owner. So, are you referring to Wells Fargo or to the person that will purchase this property if this is approved?
It's a single ownership in the tract of land, so Wells Fargo is the one who's the trustee for it, so you have one tract underneath one ownership.
That's, I just wanted you to clarify that. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Others wish to comment, come forward to the podium.
Good evening. William Vaughn, 158 Eagles Landing Lane. As I told the Planning Board, I have extensive experience at this. I'm a 30-year retired Navy captain, worked for Naval Facilities Engineering Command, lots of planning. I planned Gitmo. I did the migrant office facility in there for 16 million. I was also in the BRAC Commission when they closed and did some things, and we expanded Fort Lee, Virginia, $1 billion with a B, so I know a little bit about what I'm talking about. And with all respect to Mr. Brayley over there, he's the Economic Development Commission, but for the last three presentations I've heard from him, he sounds more like the Industrial Development Commission. Economic development includes all aspects. And in the letters that I wrote to you people, which I hope maybe somehow become part of the public record, because I did present them to you individually, and you just heard your financial audit, your solvency ratios are, I think, maybe they'll say marginal in some areas. I mean, your, your, your average balance or expenditures went down 20%. I think if you do a really intense parsing of this development and what can go there, light commercial, mixed use, residential housing, your revenues will be better than with an industrial-type application. Your solvency ratios will be better. You need to find revenue for your, for your service ratios. The gentleman, fortuitous, he's talking about the fire department, and he has a smaller tax base in Farmington District. How does he support that? This will provide you with very much larger tax base for revenue for the residences, et cetera. I'm the Utilities Director in Stateville. I know about how you get water revenues. You're going to get more water revenues from houses, commercial, than you will from 15 guys in a factory flushing the toilet three times a day, you know, per thousand gallons. So, your economic impact potential with housing and light commercial is going to be very much more. Transportation, people talk about it. Look at the NC dot plan. You've got one circle up there now. A T-bone is planned for that overpass, and a large circle at Farmington Road. Can you imagine three circles in a road within a quarter mile of each other? That's what's in the plan. Okay, so that has to be worked into the mix. There were a few, I think, inconsistencies in the way how this process went down. We got kind of a late letter at my house about the drop-in meeting. We never saw a sign posted on US 158. State code says when there is a hearing, at the same time the letters are mailed, the sign has to be out. I can show you 100, 200 people who drive that road every day and live there, to the person, I don't remember a sign. Same thing happened with the Planning Board. There's a sign there now because you're doing this today. So, there are some inconsistencies in that. With all due respect to two of the board members here, there seem to be some inconsistencies or potential for, two of you are directors on the Economic Development Commission, but you're going to be voting on recommendations that the president of the EDC just made. Now, so everybody in your room understands, the EDC was established years ago by state law, general statute. They serve at your pleasure. You could probably dissolve them tomorrow if you don't like it, but it was set up by you. So, you are the regulator for him, but now a couple of y'all, I'm not saying anything's wrong, but a couple of y'all are now regulating yourselves. So, that's always, and I know perception is sometimes bad, sometimes good, so you need to think about that. I have some more petitions. I don't know if you got the petitions that were given at the Planning Board. They were sort of dismissed out of hand when they got to the chair in the middle, putting off the side. I don't know if they made the public record. If I can eventually approach the clerk, I can hand these over. There's another 36 or so here. Some might be repetitions, but people are worried about this. I don't remember, did he mention, from the Stemmon Corp., did he mention the 60-40? Of the people who went to this thing, 60-40 were against, okay? So, that was not really, that was glossed over at the Planning Board. All the petitions that were there were glossed over, and it went 7-0. And as I said earlier, when I read, read through the thing, point by point, this thing needs to be master-planned. I think the county and the citizens will be better served if you do a better economic analysis and master-plan. Your tax revenues for the long term, as with the lady mentioned, just drive down US 29 through China Grove, grass growing up in abandoned factories. The day that they had the Planning Board vote, Mr. Brayley got up there, he'd come over from trying to get two, two businesses to enter into some vacant industrial sites. You have some vacant in the area. Why would you build a new and open up when you still have things to do? Now, as far as the percentage of industrial in the county, things have changed in the last 30 years. If you're going to put a factory there, and I agree, it's a good location because of the availability of things, utilities and such, but as I said earlier, that are the exact same conditions that make it ideal for housing, economical housing, senior housing, lower endpoint housing for families, good access to transportation corridors, et cetera. The water's there, you have an environmental feature, a drainage feature in the middle. You still have to deal with that. You can put that into a planned community and a walking community. On the other side, on the north side, you're still going to have to put a lift station. You've got $250,000, $300,000 to put a lift station in there, okay? Your sewer is what, eight inch maybe? Anything bigger than that, you're going to have to expand. And remember, you've got a 2.5% ratio by the state wastewater rules that say you can only allocate so much, so you have an allocation issue that has to be looked at for your wastewater. Not telling what kind of industry you've got there, but that can limit the industry that you have there. There are probably some better places in the county near major water sources where they can have water. Most industries don't want a finished water. They don't want to pay for drinking water. They want to have a water that might not be polished, like from the South Yadkin River, and they have it, they just put a settler in, they use it for their process, they use it for the cooling tower, they put it back. You don't have that location here. Those, those are the type of industries that do that. Ms. Galloway did make the comment about $300,000 houses. I went back home that very night and checked, and the Realtor.com, the selling point around here now is 294,000, average. That's just a fact of life. Seniors need patio housing, because when they're in the life, they might want to have one bedroom for Mr. Business and a guest room and a small place to put a garage. That can be done here. You can have a walking community. I would encourage you to investigate, and the Stemmon Company can tell you, certain things, certain walking communities, certain planned communities. You can have storefronts underneath and apartments on top. You can make this, this is large enough that you can make it into a showplace down that corridor for 158, and I implore you to do that. On the resolution that came over from the, from the Planning Board, they check the blocks, look at the statute from North Carolina, they have to address each one of those issues in the statute. You have to say A, you have to say B, you have to say C. They did, and they have to certify that. It really is true. They can say not A, not A, not B. I don't think they really did, because I think they were just looking at, no offense to Mr. Brayley, 20, 30 years, somebody's dream, because 30 years ago, no development in the area, still farmland, maybe. It's changed. Look what's coming down 158. Do you really want to stop that kind of growth? Make it into a showplace. You can have control of that. It might take a little longer for Wells Fargo to get the return on the investment, but slow and steady wins the race. Quick cash now for some family who's dumping the property and wants it, or you slow it down a little bit. You have that authority. You can do that. You can say, send it back, let's plan this properly. Let's make this the best potential now, midterm, and long-term for the citizens of this county. Let's maximize the resource. Let's not let it turn into something 15 years from now, that you're going to have an ISO or maybe. You don't know what come, but you might have to tear it down and reinvest. So, everything that makes that thing okay for industry also makes it good for the alternative. Now, you want young families to stay in the county? Give them a nice place to live. When we moved here, there were three things the wife looked at, and we've been here two years. She went to your webpage, Planning Department, which still says, here's the zoning map. It just puts up the one picture right there, and it shows RA and agricultural. Great. She goes to rate your schools. Congratulations, your schools rate very well. They look at rate your schools, and you look at your transportation network, access to transportation, so you can go to jobs. In one of my letters I sent to you, I said, why would I not have a commercial area like commercial? I'm an engineer. I'd set up an office over there, instead of going to Winston to have an office. Do you not want professionals to stay in the county? Would you like that type professional to be here? Give them a place to be. Doctors' offices, dentist offices, things like that to support a growing young community. Those are the things that are important. My neighbor has said, and he was on the ground floor, I understand, with Home Depot when they started, so he's very knowledgeable, and he said, with the industry these days, and he travels the country and sets up things like this, having spec buildings built in places, there really can be more jobs in that type of thing, you know, corner McDonald's, the subway, whatever, than you will get with a factory anymore, because things are so automated. So, don't shoot yourself in the foot. Don't, for 30, 40 years, take away an opportunity to enhance the actual community and living environment for your grandchildren and your children, okay? Industry will find a place. You have vacant places in the county, really. He'll tell you, he's trying to fill them. He tried to fill two the day he spoke at the Planning Board meeting. They can still be done. There might be better places, nearer to better resources, a package plant. You can build a 20,000 gallon a day package plant, expandable to 100,000, 200,000, and support the kind of industry that might need access to that kind of water. You won't get that kind of industry here, because you can't supply that kind of water right here, right now. And you have to think about the sewer things. You have that drainage feature in there that you've got to think about, stormwater management. These are all things that are easily planned if you do your master plan correctly. Look at your economic indicators, your solvency ratios. What's going to give me the best long-term return on the total investment for the county for the next 10, 20, 30 years? I ask your indulgence in that, and I ask that you give that due consideration. I would agree with one of the three options. If not outright, turn it down for now, then send it back to the board, to the Planning Board, for those kind of deliberations. Or select the Y'all Guys Good Committee of citizens who have expertise in things based on experience in things. Get the guys who have done the Home Depot before. Get the guys who have done the master planning, and let the citizens say, this is really the, the best thing that we kind of want. You got 60-40 right out from the beginning. You got dozens of signatures last time that said no. You got another 36 or so here, and some might be repeats, because the older gentleman that went around was knocking on doors, so he wouldn't know who had signed before, but still, you get the point. This is an opportunity to have a very controlled, very planned, very nice extension of what's coming down 158. But if you put an industrial center right in the middle of it, you just put a block in there, okay? So, now you're going to have people who live north of there, the haves, and maybe some of the, a little bit of has south of there towards Moxville, so you don't want haves and have-nots. You want everybody to have the same opportunity. This is a great opportunity. Where I came from up in Virginia, they took the Chester, Virginia, you can look at it, the George Emerson up there developed it. He made a planned walking community. Beautiful. Senior housing, multi-use type housing, storefronts on the bottom, houses on top. Look at what the military did. We did it at Fort Belvoir, Virginia, Maine Contonan at Fort Belvoir. Same type thing, planned and walking community. The government's figured it out, believe it or not, which is unusual. You've got storefronts for services on the bottom, people living on top. That's what you need here, and you can control that and make it wonderful. And with your own plans from 2010, your open space, how you're going to do subdivisions. In your plans, you even say, let's have a bunch of trees in between. We don't want a bunch of houses and subdivisions in there like that, but you control the subdivisions, and there's a way of doing it. Even in your 2010 plan, you said, this is the right way to make these subdivisions appear in here and how they look, so they don't look too, as you drive by, you really don't notice them. That's what you want. I guarantee you, your plan says you can have 60-foot industrial buildings, you're going to screw up the view shed. Now, the industrial on the other side they talked about, I sent you all a link, or in one of the emails I did to somebody, there's a link out there. When these things close down and they well, the materials will become unprofitable to extract at some point in time. Guess what those things become? Those holes fill up with water. You're in a flyway with migratory birds. When they fill up and they let that go back to green, you're going to have a wonderful conservation area. Doesn't that fit well with your schools across the street? Wouldn't that fit well on the other side of the interstate? Wouldn't that look nice when people drive down 40 and they don't see factories, but they see trees and ducks and birds flying around? And a nice place, you know, to want to get off and maybe go to a park type thing. These are the things you need to look at. Quality of life. People working in that factory, yes, jobs are needed. How many people are going to be Davie County people that work in that factory? I guarantee you, you'll have folks come over from Winston, and they're going to work there, and then you're going to take the paycheck back, and they're going to spend it in Winston, and they're not going to spend it here. You want people to stay here, spend the money here, and return those dollars to the economy in this area. My subdivision is Eagles Landing. All this stuff happened at the same time, and that subdivision was platted and approved by the Planning Board, right when they kind of knew all this other stuff was going on. Why in the world would you approve a $10 million investment in homes and then come back a year and a half later and say, we're going to put industry right next to you? Isn't that inconsistent? It is. It's inconsistent. You talk about consistency with the plan. That type use is consistent with the plan, as it kind of always has been. Mr. Brayley has a good point, but that would have been an excellent point 30 years ago. That train left the station. The demographics and the nature of things has changed that. 158 is a housing corridor. My wife just had her hair cut in town here. The lady who cuts her hair lives over towards Advance or somewhere. You know what she said? I love driving 158 in every day. It's such a wonderful ride. You want to talk about up there, at the furniture store? There is a plan up there for a circle and how to get access to the interstate, so that, that interruption in there is going to be, be fixed, but that's also a corridor for light commercial and housing. Don't give up a perfect opportunity to make the perfect planned investment in community I guess I said enough. If I have permission to approach the clerk, I would like to submit these signatures. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, and the statement that is in front of you for approval, I wish you would parse each section based on the things that I've talked about and the things that I've written to you about, and see if it really makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd ask each, anyone else that wishes to come forward to this public hearing, come forward, podium, state your name, and then comment on proposal.
My name's Don Vernon. Once again, I live at 147 Pudding Ridge Road. What I was going to speak to before was, you know, I'm not sure if anybody's ever seen all the tractors, and we've got a lot of tractors travel the highways up Farmington Road. A lot of times, they take more than their length. They take, sometimes you have to get off the road for these large tractors to get off, get over the highway, but, and they're not traveling very fast either, but I'm not sure what the solution is on that, but that is happening daily, especially during hay season, you know, corn being harvested, whatever, but we've got, we've got all that traffic to contend with, too. So, I understand, you know, has anybody ever thought about how we 158, coming from, east from Moxville? All of that traffic gets off of Farmington Road. They either go into Statesville, they go into Winston-Salem to work, very few, you know, not that many people work, say, in the Moxville area, so most of them are commuters, and they, they're going somewhere else to work. But all that traffic in the mornings, they're fighting with the school buses, you know, the students in the schools, the parents, they're also trying to get through that intersection. That's just something to, to consider. Just this past year, the, the traffic backs up from the roundabout, all the way back down to 158 in the mornings, and the roundabout traffic has got the right-of-way, even from coming off I-40 at the ramp. If you're going south on Farmington Road, they've got the right-of-way, so I can get access, even though there's a quarter mile of traffic waiting to get through, I've got, I've got the right-of-way to get through that intersection. Something else I was going to bring up was a lot of industrial areas that we have, say, for instance, and there's one in Moxville, that, that is in the city limits, but on the south, 601, we've got, there's a lot of businesses along that stretch, plus we've got some factories on the right, we've got individual businesses, it's kind of a hodgepodge group of different businesses there. And then south of there, you know, it's, it's a residential area before you get on into Coolme, but that, that group of businesses there, in my opinion, gives the city and the county kind of people look at that as being not a, not a well-thought-out plan for these businesses to be there, they need to be cleaned up, you know, a little more zoning regulations need to be. They need to be cleaned up, you know, a little more zoning regulations need to be happening there. But I don't, I would hate to see that happen to 158 and that community there. You know, just a hodgepodge group of business continuing down 158 and that area where it's going to be developed. And, and then today, as I was thinking about this meeting and everything, I, I thought about, you know, when we were traveling I-40. You travel down I-40, you've got Bermuda Run, Bermuda Village. There's no industries there on that exit. There's zero industry. And, you know, many years ago, there was a lot of farmland there. You remember when Mr. Bonson had his pig farm there on the corner? We all remember that, right? He forced the county commissioners into rezoning that Ford Kensington, which you've got to admit, that was a, I think that's a successful area that was developed as a result of that. That was farmland, but they turned that into commercial residential area. And now there's a nice soccer park there, there's going to be some trails and everything else. There's the, you know, it's a nice area, and I think it's attractive. That's bringing more people, and they see that, and they like that. But continuing on, you go down to Harper Road, you get off the exit, you turn left, residential area. About a mile down the road is in the Vod Hospital. When you turn right, you are Tanglewood Crossing. There's no industry there. Residential areas all around, they're, they go to that shopping center, and they spend their money, they eat in restaurants. You know, there's, there's something there for when they stay close by their homes. They don't have to travel into Winston-Salem or Clemmons to do their shopping. You continue down the road, Clemmons, the same way. There's no industry off those exits. Never has been as far as, you know, I've been, you know, I've been living in this area forty-seven, in that area, worked that close to forty-five years. Continuing on, the only industries, you have to go all the way into Stratford Road and in Winston-Salem, and you turn to the right, they've got an industrial park down there. They're not close to I-40. I-40 is a great place to have a commercial area, shopping, grocery store, supermarkets. Which brings me to another point. When Farmington Community is the largest populated township in the county, it is even larger than Moxville itself. Also, the median income in Farmington, the median income is higher, the median homeownership, the median home is also higher. But do we, we don't even have a single supermarket in Farmington Township. We have to go to Bermuda Run, or we have to go into Moxville for groceries. So we've got a, we've got a large tax base there that has nowhere to go. We've got to go somewhere else to shop. And that is one of the, that's another reason that the county and their zoning should be planning something for the residents to have a close place to go to and shop. That is a benefit of the, that the planning board is supposed to be looking out for. Especially looking out for our community. And I think, I think the commercial, restaurants, residential area, there would be a great focal point to be built there on that partial of land there. There could be a park down there in the, in the wetlands, that can be hiking trails. A lot of that, I know that's in the county planning for the future, bike trails, hiking, more exercise. And I could also envision in that partial of land, a place for residents to go exercise. The YMCA in Moxville, and then there's another, GM 365 in Moxville, then there's a place in Bermuda Village, GM 365 down there, but there's nothing in Farmington. There's nothing. We have, we have virtually no shopping. And, oh, before I forget, they are building a Dollar General on Farmington right now. We're going to have a Dollar General for, you know, all of us, for us to do our shopping. So anyway, I encourage you to reconsider the planning board's motion to approve the resident of foreign district. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to come forward, podium, state your name, and then comment on the proposal?
I'm Steve Whitaker, and I live within at least a quarter mile of the property there, speaking of, of an industrial park. I've got twenty-six acres right across in that same area. And I had, in my honest opinion, I'd rather see the industrial park go in instead of a housing development. My son lives on Foster Dairy Road, and he feels the same way that I do. So that's the way I feel. Thank you.
Thank you. Others that wish to come forward, podium, state your name, and then comment.
Good evening. Nick Gavison, 217 Van Zant Road. I live up by Lake Myers. For people, I don't live in the Farmington community. I've lived in Davie County for seventy years now. Moved up here from Davison, outside of Charlotte, and I've been in North Carolina for about thirteen years now. Got to know a couple of you folks here really well. And my concerns are really more or less, what I see here is a one-off. I see, I don't see a vision. I don't see a plan. And I see nothing that really produces a positive outcome of that. I see a family, the Haynes family, that wants to unload about two hundred acres of land or a hundred fifty-plus acres of land and sell it, which is natural, makes sense. And, but I see that going into an industrial park, into an area that is very, you know, rural agricultural. And I moved here because I see Davie County as big county and extension of Charlotte, Winston-Salem, and a residential area that does have industrial in that plan, but not in that space. I see that, we already have a number of different spaces down 601, 801, you go by the old high school. You go off of even exit 170, you go by the Junkers and north of the, the 601, and then that's all industrial. There's plenty of spaces for that. I've lived in nine different countries, nine, nine, nine different states and two different countries. I've lived down, down in Charlotte, and I still, back in the day when we did travel, traveled to Charlotte Airport. And when you get off an exit that's an industrial exit, that's pretty much all you have. To the respect of Mr. Meadwell and the representative for the industrial area, when you say mixed use and commercial, and there's going to be restaurants there, it ain't going to happen. Look at it now. Look at it in Davie County. Drive down to the airport in Charlotte and go off in industrial exits, you will not see really nice restaurants. And also, let's be bluntly honest, this company that'll be moving in will be probably paying those employees about ten dollars to fifteen dollars an hour. There's going to probably be maybe a franchise near there. You're going to see what you're down by the, down by the high school area, you're going to maybe see a Hardee's, maybe a Bojangles. But again, those are already there, one exit over. So I want to see, what I'd like to see and challenge you guys in the future, is a plan for Davie County. What is, what do you want this to be? What do you want this area to be? I would love to see this still being a residential area, and it is spot-on, saying 158 is a residential corridor. Make that a complete residential greenway for the industry. We've seen some really great industries move into the county over the years. And what was interesting about seeing the audit is that over the past, what, 2017, I'd be curious to see the years prior, is that all these industries moving in, there should be this growing in, you know, revenues going in. I saw pretty much flat growth. So all these industries are bringing all these jobs and all this money, which was, is great, is fantastic. I just don't see it in the numbers quite yet. So, but I do see people from, like myself, moving out of the suburbs, and especially now, these days where COVID has completely changed the, the world that we live in. I don't travel as much. I work from home pretty much all the time. I'm in technology. I'm a, I'm a sales rep. I talk to, do Zoom calls and Teams meetings, but people want to have their own little space of land. And to challenge the three hundred thousand dollar house area, I don't see a problem with that. I do see, we definitely have a housing need. We definitely see people that need housing around the area. And so there's definitely that demand for that. And there's definitely a demand for industry, industrial spaces. But I just don't see that really in the space. I don't see the plan for it. That's what I'm missing for you guys here. And so, again, I'm not somebody that lives right down the road, and somebody that, but I do travel down 158, and it is enjoyable to be out in the, out in the country to do that. But I would like to see the vision that you guys propose for the future include something that makes something sensible for people that want to escape suburbia and want to move out to Davie County and put that into their future. Because I plan to live here for the rest of my days, and that's something that is passionate to me. And again, I know you guys have an extremely challenging job doing this, and it, but I don't want to see one-offs. I don't want to see one family or one little piece of property that makes sense for one company and one family to influence all that. Because once you put industrial there, it just kind of, hate to say, it's kind of like a cancer. It's just going to creep around. Who, what, what residential property wants to move next to that? Who wants to live next to industrial property? So with that thought, thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else that wishes to comment? Please come forward to the podium, state your name.
Hello, my name's Lola Jones Baker, Davie County Commission. I would like to say that I'm originally from Davie County. My grandma was from here, and my parents still live here. Coming home to see how Davie County changed, you know, with the trees cut down, you know, and everything. And I don't know what's going on with the buildings. They talking about moving industry here. On the way, when I come home to see my parents, I love taking 158. It, 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 it's the beautiful thing that has left the other, like Winston and Salisbury, you know? They got other buildings and stuff like that. And I love Davie County. I have kids that's going to Davie County. But like I said, I've been gone for about twenty years, twenty-five years. And it changed a little bit, but I thought it would change more. And I'm more about the kids' education. You know, when we was back in Moxville growing up, we didn't have many places to go. We had to go to Clemmons, to the skating rink, or Salisbury, to the bowling alley. The only thing we had was Rich Park. You know, and all the changes around here with all the buildings and stuff. I go to different cities, but I ain't nothing like Davie County when I come home. All the houses built on top of each other, and, I mean, people come here to see it, you know? It's, it's beautiful. And we got some good people, we got some bad people, we got people, people, you know? But it's still Davie County. And that's all I want to say, and I want to say I'm back home. I know some of y'all might know me and my parents, Mr. Boak and stuff, Sister Ellen Peggy Jones. And I like to say, y'all did a good job so far, and I want to keep on doing great things for the whole community in Davie County. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to come forward to the podium, state your name, and then comment on the proposed rezoning?
Hello, I'm Lisa Motley. I live at 866 Farmington Road, which is just past the high school. When my husband and I moved to Davie County about nineteen years ago, we always commented that at some point that intersection would go commercial. So the expectation was that one day it would, and I guess, you know, it's now heading that way. We never objected to that happening. We just would like it to be something that looks like it belongs. My concern with the industrial zoning is what that might be. I mean, obviously, I live by Vulcan. Vulcan is, and has been, looking at some of their other operations, has been a really good neighbor. They don't sit right on the road frontage, they're back along where you really can't see what's going on. They, you know, take care of the gardening and things like that out front. While my expectation is that, you know, nothing's going to happen to that property, and it stays farmland, that's not going to be a reality. I do get that. I just want to be sure that it's, there's some consideration to what is allowed there. And I don't, I tried to look up the designations of what would be the possible things that could end up there, and I never could find an actual list. And I know sometimes they're wide open as to, you know, one extreme to another, and I just would not like to see that, that tract of land turn into something that is unpleasant for people who live in the area, let alone who drive by it, and their perception of the county is something that you would not want, it would not be a selling point. I, as a follow-up, and we talked about this, traffic is a concern. You have half the county coming up to 158 to get on 40 right at Farmington. You have people exiting to get, you know, into Moxville in the various areas. There's really, when I leave my house, if there's any issues at 40, I have a few options. I can go all the way up to 801 and go down. If I can get past 40 and get on 158, I can go down. There's some roads I can cut through, some of those roads cut through past schools. I just, there's just not a lot of reasons to have a lot of traffic or bring in something that has a potential for traffic or large trucks or, and vehicles to add to the already, you know, limited roads that we have there. Like I said, 601, 801, they're a little bit more well-developed. You have, you know, two lanes going each way, you have your exits and on-ramps that are a little bit enhanced. I know that the state would look at it, but in the time that it will take for the state to resolve any of the issues, we still have to live there. Kids getting to school, you have three schools right in the same area, they've juggled the time, it's a little bit better, it's not perfect. You have new drivers, you have old drivers, you still have people, you know, that are getting off the freeway to go into town. You have people, you know, trying to get to work. There's just a lot that goes on, not just in the morning, but at the afternoon, you have still sports, and you have other things going on at the school. I, I know that there's still other, there are some businesses behind the Shell Station. They're kind of hidden where you don't notice them. I just feel like that particular land is kind of right there, kind of maybe because it sits lower to the ground or right at the level of the road. But I just feel like more thought needs to be given into what would be best use for it. I understand the economic development. We all want the, you know, the county to do well. I get that. I just want the board to consider the best options, and I'm not sure, just a blessing for a general industrial park is the best answer for that particular piece of property. I think there's other properties that are probably better well-suited for it that are either not developed at this point, or maybe could be revitalized that are not being used. So again, I would like for you to at least give some consideration, if, not necessarily saying deny it tonight, but at least defer it and, and get more information as to what could possibly be there. I was not able, I did not know about the initial meeting where they, you know, showed what their, you know, thought was and what might be proposed. So I, I don't have that to reference. I guess I'm out of the two-mile area to be notified, and I didn't see that. I did watch the planning meeting by Zoom, but was not able to voice my, my concerns or comments. And if I was there, I would basically say the same thing. I, I think there's, like I said, valid reasons, you know, having a truck get off, pull out and to get on the interstate's great, but, you know, not all of them are exiting. There's a lot that are going to be coming in and having to get into that property, you know, they're going to be turning from either Farmington or 158. So if, if there was a better, if 158 Farmington was a better-developed intersection, you know, maybe it would make sense. I just don't think the way it currently is designed, it makes sense to have some... makes sense to have something like that in that particular area. So again, thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to come forward to the public hearing? Comment if so. Come forward, state your name, and then comment on the proposed rezoning.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sort of blinded by these lights, but it appears no one else is coming forward. At this time, I would turn the public hearing back over to you and Board Chair to close the public comment section of this public hearing, provide the board the opportunity to discuss among yourselves what, if any, action you wish to take at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Vogler. All right, at this time, we will declare the public hearing closed and open it up to the board for comments.
Mr. Brawley, Mr. Meadwell, whoever might be best to answer this question. Before, as you proceed with development of that area, I mean, there's going to be, there's going to be some study of traffic as it relates to the, the, the level of, of traffic that would be coming in and out of the, the complex?
Commissioner Jones, as you're aware of, anytime someone wants to connect to a NC-DOT road, they have to file for a driveway permit. I would imagine the scale of this piece of property, that some additional analysis would be done on that. NC-DOT is very well aware of this piece of property. So I believe that improvements or suggestions for improvements have already been spoken about. So I would assume so.
And as, again, question, as I think one of the folks mentioned, the traffic pattern down Farmington Road there, as it comes back out into 158, there's been some assumption from DOT that there, that, that's going to be a high-growth area as they look at how they're going to develop the roads, 158 and Farmington Road, as access out, right?
Yes.
More than likely, Mr. Jones, DOT is going to require a traffic impact study for most any company. Moxville just approved a residential subdivision. They're requiring a traffic impact study just for a residential subdivision anytime they're going out onto US 601. So they require detailed studies, generally by a third party that comes in and studies traffic patterns before a driveway permit is issued. If that answers your question.
And in terms of the development itself, Mr. Meadwell, the, as, as, as that piece of property is developed, they've got to, you, you alluded to this before, but I want to get, get you back into that. They have to come back to you guys, and you can, there are requirements that you can, you can implement in terms of the property to use, the buffers and those types of things.
Sure. So this is the first step. If, if the board chooses to rezonate tonight, the, the process is, the, you know, development plan will be created, submitted to staff for review. As I mentioned earlier, earlier, that our technical review committee, as we're known, made up of various state staff, county staff, more than likely, some individuals from town of Moxville will probably be there too. So NC-DOT will be there. So we will look at each of these requirements as it relates to how it meets, you know, setbacks, you know, building height, you know, landscape requirements, and, you know, that's one of the key components of the quality design overlay, is looking at, that is a district that, an overlay district that encompasses the eastern part of the county, which this piece of property is located, which looks at the additional landscape requirements and signage locations and driveway cuts and things of that nature. So it's multi-layered of requirements that the developer will have to meet before any type of dirt would ever be turned on, on the property.
Mr. Meadwell, I have one question, if you don't mind. If you head up 601 north out of Moxville, you come to South Point, which is an industrial park, is that indicative of the requirements that the county has for landscaping around?
It'd be somewhat similar. I would say similar. That, that being in the town of Moxville. So their requirements are just slightly different, but I would assume that they would be very similar to those.
Once again, the, in the 2000 comprehensive map plan, it is, it is labeled industrial. It was planned to be industrial property, correct?
And actually, Mr. Buckley, I mean, if we look at the 1973 land use plan for the county, this piece is identified as industrial.
Okay. And all the other red would be highway business of Farmington?
That's correct. Yes.
That's correct?
Yep.
I would just like to say, I really appreciate all the neighbors coming, and I will tell you, I share your vision. I wish that that area could be developed into a residential commercial area because I think that's the prime place for it to be. That's a neighborhood. That's farmland, and I wish that's what we could keep it. So thank you for sharing your expertise and your opinions and for standing up for your community.
All right. Any other comments?
I would just like to make a comment based on a few things that I heard. You know, Mr. Vernon had asked about supermarkets, and he made a statement about that. Obviously, inevitably, the county's growing and, and things are changing, and with that growth comes things. This is inevitably our growth future corridor as identified by our comprehensive plan now. One of the other statements that was made is about the people that drive, that live here, that drive to Clemmons or Winston or Statesville to their job. Well, we also need more jobs here, and that's something that we've all got to look in the mirror. We need housing, but we also need more jobs to keep people here and have other families move into our community to help flourish our community.
We need somewhere for them to live, and people that work in industrial atmospheres need lower-priced housing there. If they are only making $10 to $15 an hour, then a $300,000 house is going to stretch them.
One of the, Terry, you might speak to this a little bit too. You've been showing the property for 20 years. One of the, but, but, part of the, part of, part of kind of the process here is that the market kind of determines what's going to be, be placed on a certain piece of property in a certain place. I know, Terry, and I don't know if this property, you can speak to this or not, but that there have been multiple folks that have looked at that property and have kind of, over the course of years, layered out what the proper use of that property is going to be as it, as the market looks at it. I know there are folks that have worked in the residential realm, the mixed-use realm, and also the industrial-commercial realm, and they've kind of come, based on the developer and based of the, all those heads that have come together, have come, have kind of come to this point with that piece of property.
I'll give you an example. Gil Dan almost located at that site. Gil Dan built in Moxville. Gil Dan spent $150 million on 20 acres. It would take 500, $300,000 homes to equal that one investment, not to count the jobs. The jobs were the bonus in the deal. But there have been numerous. When I'm dealing with the state of North Carolina, the state of North Carolina knows that site. They know there's an opportunity there. You can decide how it looks, but we first have to determine the zoning. You know, we, we can't, the reason we brought Stimml and Associates to the table, they are very professional people. They designed the campus at Wake Forest. They designed Kinderton. They designed what's going on at Bailey Park in Winston-Salem. They designed what's going on at High Point University. These are professional people, and we couple them with the right developer, we can get the look.
What ever $150 million is tied to tax? That's what they invested initially.
No, there's no dialogue back and forth here, so thank you. But in our audit report, Gil Dan is one of the top 10 taxpayers. That number's in the audit report. I don't remember off the top of my head what it is, but it is in the audit report. Okay. Any other input, questions?
Mr. Chairman, I, I would just like to point out that as a former developer myself, I know that every house that's built in this county that requires county services incrementally causes a tax increase to the taxpayers of this county. And the way we try to offset that is by economic development. That's why we have stressed such importance on economic development. To keep the taxes low on the residential members of the community is to seek out industry that doesn't require all the necessary things that, that residential development does, such as schools. We calculate from time to time how valuable a business is to the area, as to how many schoolchildren, education, it pays for. And I think that is the, the main thing that we need to look at when we consider the value of economic development and the money that is spent on it versus the tremendous amounts of money that come back in from it. And, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to have to make a motion to approve this zoning, considering the taxpayers of Davie County and what it will mean to them in the future.
Let me advise the board that if a motion is made to approve or a motion made to deny, you need to have certain findings, as was mentioned earlier, certain boxes have to be checked, and it needs to be read into the motion itself, either on approval or on denial.
I believe that the following statement be adopted in support of a motion to approve. The proposed zoning amendment is consistent with the Davie County Comprehensive Plan because the property is designated industrial on the 2019 plan and before that even, the previous versions of the plan. The Comprehensive Plan, Plan Policy goes to maintain a diverse industrial base as an integral part of Davie County's future growth and development, and to ensure new industrial development and a safe and reliable access to major highways. The property is indicated as a primary growth area on the Growth Enhancement Strategy Map within the Comprehensive Plan. Therefore, we find this zoning amendment is reasonable and in the public interest because it supports the Comprehensive Policy, Plan Policies and maps above, and because the property located next to the I-40 interchange, the property's location near other commercially and industrial zoning property, the available, availability of public infrastructure, including water and sewer, the proposed amendment will provide opportunities for businesses to locate in Davie County and increase its tax base. All development of the property parcel would be subject to the requirements of the zoning ordinance, which would include screening, setbacks, height limitations, building inspections, and other development criteria, including any other state permitting, such as the Department of Transportation.
That is included in your motion?
Yes.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Do I have any, any further discussion? Seeing none, call for the vote. All in favor, raise your hand. Okay, all opposed. Okay, that passes four to one. Thank you. Right, next we have a second public hearing, and this is for, I suppose Mr. Meadwell would come up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before you now, you have zoning map amendment 2021-03. This is a request by Clayton Properties Group to rezonate 3.963 acres of land consisting of two tracts of land from R-20 and residential agricultural quality design overlay to the residential eight quality design overlay. The subject properties are located adjacent to 470 NC Highway 801 North and are further described as Davie County Tax Maps C-710901 and C-7140A8. These properties are part of the Braden at Bermuda Run subdivision project that lies in both jurisdictions of the town of Bermuda Run as well as Davie County. The majority of the 137 lot subdivision lies within Bermuda Run's ETJ. The access to this subdivision lies within the county's jurisdiction. They have, or as proposed, as, as proposed as part of that subdivision, these six lots will lie on this 3.9 acres. This is the closest zoning designation that the county has in terms of to match what the town of Bermuda Run has for their zoning classification. It, I would note that the developer, Clayton Properties Group, did ask to be voluntary annexed into the town of Bermuda Run so that the entire piece of property would, could be developed under their guidelines. However, the town did not choose to do so. So that is the real reason why this request is coming forward tonight. The Davie County Land Use Plan does identify this as residential. The site is in a WS4 protected watershed. That does limit the amount of impervious area and the number of units per acre. I will say that based on the balance of the larger portion of the property, this 3.9-acre tract is included in that, so they are not achieving any higher density than what is allowed currently in the ordinance. So as you can see in the maps, including your package, the, the property is actually split zone between R-20 and RA. It is currently vacant, so it'll, it will just serve as six lots, a mail kiosk, and the actual service drive that does go into the subdivision. The planning board did hear this at its May, April 27 meeting and did a vote unanimously to approve. Action before the board tonight, either one, move that the following statement be adopted in support of the motion to approve, two, move for a motion to deny the request, or three, defer for additional consideration. I'll be more than glad to answer any questions that the board may have, if any.
Andrew, this is going to connect into that larger development that they approved, correct?
That is correct.
So all of these streets are going to connect, you think, eventually?
That is correct. That is correct.
This is a secondary egress.
That, well, this will serve as the primary entrance into Braden, but those other streets Well, this will serve as the primary entrance into the Braden, but those other streets within that existing subdivision tie into this street.
This rezoning is no more, it's not an increase in density?
No, no, the requirements of the watershed watershed dictate that.
Any more questions from Mr. Meadwell? All right, this is a public hearing, so Mr. Vogler?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chair has announced this is the date now of public hearing, Chapter 153A, North Carolina General Statutes and Chapter 155 of the Davie County Code of Ordinance. This board is conducting a public hearing on a proposed amendment to the Davie County Code of Ordinance, Chapter 155 zoning ordinance by an application of Clayton Properties Group for the rezoning of approximately 3.963 acres from residential 20 and residential agricultural to quality design overlay and residential eight, said property being located at 470 NC Highway 801 North, described as Davie County Tax Parcel Number C-710.901 and C-714A008, being a portion of the Bradenton at Bermuda Run Village project. You notice this public notice was advertised, ran in the local paper with general circulation as counted as required by law, as noted in the notice of public hearing included in your packet. I would ask that anyone who wishes to comment at this public hearing, come forward to the podium, state your name for the board, and then comment on the proposed rezoning. Mr. Chair, seeing no one come forward, I would now turn the public hearing back over to you as board chair to close the public comments section of the public hearing, provide the board the opportunity to discuss among yourself what, if any, action you wish to take with regards to this matter.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vogler. So this time, turn it back over to the board for comments or action.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Okay, a motion and a second. Any further to approve? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, raise your hand. That is approved, thank you. All right, next we move to the third public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, before you now, you have zoning map amendment 2021-04. This is a request by KS RV LLC to rezone approximately three acres of land from R-20 quality design overlay to highway business. The subject piece of property is located at 123 Juney Beecham Road and is further described as Davie County Tax Map E-741. Including in your package is a zoning map of the piece of property, and just for location purposes, this is the piece of property back behind Snoke's barbecue. So as you can see, the current classification is R-20, however, you do see that there are several commercial pieces of property there along US Highway 158 that are currently zoned highway commercial. The property is currently cleaned up or being cleaned up by Mr. Rick King. For this purpose, there were several manufactured homes on the property. I think probably at this time they have been removed. The Conference Plan identifies the future land use of this piece of property as a commercial mixed use, and this piece of property is in a primary growth area. The issues to consider, this comes to the board as a general use rezoning, so the board should consider all those uses that would be allowed in the highway business zoning district, not just one particular use, but other things that the board should consider is the property's potential as a commercial use, the property's potential as a residential use, the property's location along or near a major arterial. As always, any type of project or development would still have to go back before RTRC for additional review for a development plan is issued, whether the proposed reclassification is consistent with all purposes, goals, objectives, and policies adopted plans for the areas, and whether the proposed reclassification is consistent with all the overall character of existing development in the area. The planning board did hear this at its April 27 meeting and did vote unanimously a seven in favor and none opposed. Action before you tonight is either one, move that the following statement be adopted in support of a motion to approve, move that the following statement be adopted in support of a motion to deny, or defer the request for additional consideration. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back over to you and answer any questions that the board may have.
Okay, what was the labeled use? Is this gonna be more storage or?
I do believe that that is what Mr. King currently operates there on 158, and this would be one of those allowed uses for that piece, for this zoning designation.
It's storage unit or the camper storage?
I'm sorry, camper.
The camper storage?
Yes, camper.
All right. All right, again, this is a public hearing, so Mr. Vogler?
Chairman, it's now, this is the date now of the public hearing, Chapter 153, add to North Carolina General Statutes, Chapter 155 of Davie County Code of Ordinance. This board is now conducting a public hearing on a proposed amendment to the Davie County Code of Ordinance, Chapter 155 zoning ordinance by an application of Rick King for the rezoning of approximately three acres from residential 20 to quality design overlay to highway business, said property being located at 123 Juney Beecham Road and described as Davie County Tax Map Parcel E-741. You notice this public hearing was advertised and ran in the local newspaper, general circulation as counted as required by law, as noted in the notice of public hearing included in your packet. I'd ask for anyone who wishes to come to comment at this public hearing, please come forward to the podium, state your name, and then comment on the proposed rezoning.
Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, my name is Rick King. I'm the one that supplied to have this rezoned, and I'd like to appreciate your consideration, and I'd be glad to answer any questions anybody has.
Are you indeed planning to do another camper storage or RV storage area? Is that your intent?
That's one of the things I'm looking at. My present facility is maxed out. I actually have a waiting list, and I've probably turned down 30 folks since, in the last six months, so that is one of the things we're looking at.
You bet.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to come forward, this public hearing, comment, please come to the podium, state your name for the board, and then comment on this proposed zoning. Mr. Chairman, seeing no one else come forward, I would now turn this public hearing back over to you as board chair to close the public comments section of this public hearing, provide the board the opportunity to discuss among themselves what, if any, action you wish to take with regards to this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Vogler. All right, this time, turn it over to the board for discussion or action.
I'll make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor, raise your hand. That is approved, five zero. Next, we move to our fourth public hearing, which is the budget for the upcoming year for Davie County, and I will ask Mr. Bone and Ms. West to come forward. And Ms. Jeff.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. As we're pulling up the presentation, first of all, I just wanna say thank y'all as board, and also thanks to staff. This is my first budget as manager of Davie County, and it's just been a wonderful process. We've had a great conversation, great input. I thank you for your time and investment, and I thank staff for all their time and investment, and I think we've got a good product here to present to you. So as we discussed, this is the recommended budget for fiscal year 2021, 2022, as is required by the North Carolina General Statutes.
Okay, so the recommended budget for fiscal year 2021, 2022 is in the amount of $89,926,276, of which general fund makes up $71,026,091. The proposed property tax rate is 73.3 cents per $100 evaluation, which would be a one cent reduction in the tax rate. The revenue neutral tax rate, and as you are aware, since this is in the process of a revaluation year, that is, you know, something that we are obligated, and it's our responsibility to be transparent, to share with you and with the community. The revenue neutral rate for fiscal year 21, 22 is calculated at 70.58 cents. The value of one penny of property value equates to approximately $515,000. We do want to just explain a little bit more about the general fund calculation of the revenue neutral tax rate. And so, Robbins will speak to that.
Yeah, according to North Carolina General Statute 15911E, each year at which a general reappraisal of real property has been conducted, the budget officer shall include in the budget for comparison purposes a statement of the revenue neutral property tax rate for the budget. What we're required to do for that calculation is determine a rate that would produce the revenues equal to those produced in the current fiscal year. So we went through that calculation, and we came up with 69.06 cents. Then, in the second step, we need to increase the rate by a growth factor equal to the average annual percentage increase in the tax base since the last general revow. Since we do ours every four years, that amount is the average regular annual growth rate is 2.19 percent to get the revenue neutral tax rate for fiscal year 21, 22 of 70.58 cents. And just as a note, that's a difference of 3.22 cents, so that's 3.22 cents below the current tax rate.
So Commissioners, you know, in addition with the recommended budget, we have maintained a four cent countywide fire tax, while the advanced rural fire district also has maintained the same rate as the current year. The general fund contributes an additional 2.48 cents to the fire and rescue services. Additional fire and rescue funds of $903,000 is to be distributed at the Commissioner's discretion. The budget is balanced and is prepared in accordance with the local government budget and Fiscal Control Act, with fund balance appropriated at $3,708,231. Of course, just because it's been appropriated doesn't mean it will be spent, and so we certainly hope that that would not be expended the full amount. All right, so now that we've got the PowerPoint, so thank y'all for your help with that. So just a general overview of the fiscal year 2021, 22 manager's recommended budget by fund, so what we have up here, general fund of $71 million, the capital improvement plan from the general fund, $3.6 million, advance rural fire protection district fund, $452,000, environmental protection fund, $483,000, public utilities fund of $8.4 million, E-911 fund of $279,000, employee help fund of $5.6 million. For a total fiscal year 2021, 22 recommended budget, again, of $89,926,276.
So now we're gonna focus on the general fund, and if we look at our revenue of $71,026,91, of course, the majority of that comes from property tax, and sales tax makes up 14 percent. Intergovernmental is 8.05 percent, and that includes like federal and state dollars, as well as towns and other intergovernmental things. Charges for services is 7.54 percent. Miscellaneous is like fines and forfeiture, then profits that we get in for leasing our vehicles, and then we're spending the money back. And then fund balance appropriated is 5.22 percent in this budget, and that is down from last year, I think, like 1.2 million, right, from last year's fund appropriated. So if we look at our expenditures for the general fund, this is looking at 2021 original budget versus the major recommended for 2022. So for education, there is an increase, and that is based upon our local intergovernmental with the school system, and also that includes Davidson-Davy Community College. Business operations has an increase pretty substantial, but that is due to our group health insurance going up this year, and we have that whole increase showing up in the human resources budget. And we also have a salary study increase that's showing up in the HR budget this year. We are trying to stay competitive with our neighboring counties and cities so that we do wanna have that amount in for salary study. If we look at our debt service, that is basically the same, and that is just the way the debt is structured. And our growth in infrastructure, there is a slight increase there, and that is just due to county buildings and facilities and maintenance. And then for quality of life in place, that increase is due to recreation and parks. And for safe and healthy communities, that is generally related to the fire and rescue increase of $903,000, and then expanding convalescent care for EMS, and then we do have one ambulance replacement in there this year. So just quickly going through, for the expenditures, you'll see that safe and healthy community is 42 percent, and growth in infrastructure is 9.4, education is 22 percent, and quality of life in place is 5.08 percent. So when we look at education, it is mostly related to Davie County schools, and then you can also see Davidson-Davy Community College, and then there's a small piece in there for Knight-Davy and for the Juvenile Crime Protection Prevention Council. For business operations, it's mostly comprised of contributions to CIP, solid waste, public utilities, and then you can also see the breakdown of the different departments in there. Human resources, again, looks so large because it does have information. It has the funds in there for the salary study and for group health insurance. Growth in infrastructure, this is mostly development facility services, but that is what makes up so much of this focus area. Then we also see tax admin, and revow is another large portion there. Okay, so quality of life in place, it is mostly broken into thirds for recreation and parks and senior and veteran services and public library. We also do have cooperative extension and elections in there as well. And then for safe and healthy communities, it's mostly health and human services, sheriff and emergency services. Then you'll see 10.92 percent is for fire and rescue, and then communications has a small slice of 3.9 percent. This slide shows public utilities, because it is its own enterprise fund at 8.4 million, and you can see that how that's broken out. We do have debt service in here this year, and that is new for us.
So also included in the fiscal year 21, 22 budget is the 21, 22 Capital Improvement Plan. You'll hear a little bit more about that later on in the next public hearing, but just to tell you about what's going on in the next fiscal year, we have $1.6 million for continued planning for the detention center, the second year of our Davidson-Davy Community College contribution that totals $3,750,000 or so. We also have our Viper radio project, and for fiscal year 22, this amount includes radio dispatch upgrades, two-site paging upgrades, as well two-site paging upgrades, as well as county fire radio flash upgrades. And then, our space study implementation has an amount in there to address the needs of the former Health and Human Services buildings. In public utilities proposed budget, we have this for the contribution for the capital improvement plan. If you recall, we approved that last September. But for fiscal year 21-22, the amount's coming up for the cool me water improvement expansion. That's the joint project. The thirty-eight million dollars will be funded through grants, loans, and other financing sources. We also have new water and sewer extensions, repairs and replacement, and Sparks Road room repairs, as well as a SCADA upgrade.
Commissioners, as we've discussed previously, you know, Davie County does want to remain competitive as referred employer for full-time and regular and part-time employees. And so, we are, in the proposed budget, we've got inclusion of having up to a two-percent increase for eligible employees. One percent will occur on July 4th for those who are not experiencing any performance issues or not serving any probationary status. Employees who meet performance goals on the county-wide performance appraisal can be eligible to receive up to an additional one-percent salary, as has been done in the past, for an increase on their anniversary date and at the discretion of the department director. The county will continue, as has been stated, a multi-year market rate and study cycle to ensure that staff salaries are competitive in our region. You know, we do compete with our communities that surround us, and so we want to stay competitive and current with that. In regards to employee benefits, the retirement contribution rate for the county portion increases. There is no increase in the employee portion. That is something that the state has required. And so, according to, this has been done according to the North Carolina Local Government Employees Retirement System Regulations. And this, Rob, this is the, what, third year of a three-year series of increases with that? But we do anticipate that there may be future increases down the road as well. But currently, this is the third of three years. Group health insurance rates will increase by eight percent for both the county and for the employees who subscribe, for their children, spouse, or family coverage. So, you know, one thing that we've been really blessed with over the last few years, this is, we've had very stable rates. That's because of our claims. We did have a little bit higher claim in the past year, and so this is our first increase in premiums for employees since fiscal year 2015-16. So, that's been, we've had a very nice period of time, and still, honestly, eight percent is still pretty low for increase. I've seen counties that got double-digit increases. So, to only have an eight-percent increase, you know, over a six-year period, that says a lot about Davie County. And so, you know, part of that, I think, is with the wellness program. That's certainly been a very proactive program. And so, you know, just to continue that thought, to reduce the healthcare claims, we will continue the health risk assessment for full-time employees and their spouses in the county's health insurance plan. Wellness incentive for employees and their spouse on the health plan will be paid out once a year as a bonus for those that complete the health risk assessment and maintain healthy ranges. Consequently, employees and covered spouses who fail to complete the health risk assessment or who will continue to show poor results will be charged a cost or penalty on their insurance premiums.
This is our slide that you've seen many times, it's getting kind of wide, because what this represents is the property tax rate history. So, a few things about this bar graph. The red boxes represent the revaluation year, so every four years, we do revow. The arrows represent, the first arrow represents the only time we've had an operational tax increase. So, a tax increase due to county operations for county departments occurred in the 2006-2007 fiscal year. So, it's been quite a while, although we have had other tax increases. We increased it only due to voter-approved debt. So, back in 2015-16, we increased the tax rate ten-point-eight cents to pay for the new high schools debt service. And you can see the small tax rate increase, well, it's one penny, the purple little top hat on the last four fiscal years to pay for the debt service for recreation and parks, general obligation bonds. So, it's been quite a while since we have had any property tax rate increases related to county operations other than what was voter-approved, is the point of the slide. Also, we've already been talking a bit about fund balance and our fund balance percentage history. So, what this slide shows is the purple line you see at the twenty-five percent represents our county fiscal policy on our fund balance percentage. The blue line represents the county. We can see it's kind of dipping down, so we've been below twenty-five percent for the year ending June 30th of 2019, as well as 2020, as the auditor, you know, commented on briefly before. The green line is statewide, all counties, you can see. And the red line at the top is our peer counties, so those counties that have populations between twenty-five and fifty thousand. I include that because that's something that the local government commission also compares us to our peer counties, just to see how we're holding up, so. You can see, you know, we're going to have to take some action to get our fund balance percentage back into policy. So, the next few slides have the general fund fiscal policies. The county will use one-time revenues for one-time expenditures, not operations. And this next part is our fund balance policy that will maintain a targeted available fund balance at the close of each fiscal year equal to twenty-five percent. If we don't do that, we have to adopt a plan to reduce, I mean, to restore the available fund balance back to twenty-five percent. And I have some information on the next slide that will address that. And again, currently, it's twenty-point-one-seven percent. I don't plan that we will get back to twenty-five percent in the next fiscal year. It might take us another two or three years to do that. Then, we will also develop a capital improvement plan. We did a preliminary presentation of that after April meeting. We'll talk some more about that at the next public hearing. But here is what we have for our fund balance restoration plan. The current, the 21-22 manager's recommended budget includes conservative appropriations, conservative estimated revenues, and as Cindy said before, the appropriated fund balance included in this budget is one-point-two million dollars less than the current fiscal year. So, and also during the next fiscal year, any budget amendments presented for revenues, we'll use that to further take care of our fund balance instead of making further appropriations as long as we can, if it's appropriate. Some more of our county fiscal policies, that we would use a balanced approach to capital funding, using pay-as-you-go financing, debt servicing, capital reserve funds, and we'll confine long-term borrowings to capital improvements that can't be paid from current revenues or fund balance. And also, we'll structure the debt financing so that our ratio will be less than fifty-five percent in the ten-year period. And our net debt service expenditures to total general fund expenditures will not exceed fifteen percent. I know we've discussed before that this ratio is the one that will have pressure on it when we have the detention center debt come on. And we'll also develop a five-year financial forecast for the general fund.
Next, to look at the utility fund, we also have fiscal policies. The county will maintain a minimum debt service coverage ratio of one-point-five times and maintain a minimum days cash on hand of three-hundred-and-sixty-five days. We're well above that at this point. Formalize a projection of a revenue expenditure, capital investment, and reserve requirements, and develop a five-year financial forecast. And then, the county will also incorporate annual rate increases as necessary to comply with adaptive financial policies and with a goal of limiting any increases to a maximum of three percent if possible. We'll adopt, on an annual basis, the CIP and financial and rate forecast. CIP and financial rate forecast was last adopted on September 8th, 2020. And then, adopt and implement a system development fee strategy to fund continued growth of system. And that is what we have here. It's kind of hard to see, but you'll see that we do have a four-point-seven-five percent increase for the water systems for this year and for the next year also. This would have been higher had we not been able to get some of the grants that we were able to get from the federal and state government. So, we're excited about that. While our goal is three percent or less, we do know at times that we're going to have to surpass that, and so we want to bring that to your attention.
Commissioners, you know, we've thrown a lot of information out there, but we do want to highlight a few other things. First of all, the proposed budget does support three-hundred-and-fifty-seven full-time and one-hundred-and-seven part-time positions, and these staff provide superior services to our citizens. We're proud of our staff and our atmosphere that we have. We have a wonderful team. The budget would revise fee schedules. The K-9 privilege tax would be rescinded on tax bills beginning in 2021. The mile reimbursement rate will be forty-five cents per mile. Interlocal agreements with the towns are included. There are expanded convalescent care ambulance services. We talked a lot about that and how that will add benefit to our community. Incentives for business recruitment, growth, and retention for economic development are also included. The budget also has a continuation of the five focus areas as outlined in the Board Commissioner's Strategic Plan and performance-based budget. The budget also has continued investments needed for needed infrastructure and technology as prioritized in our capital improvements plan and operational budget. Additionally, we have continued implementation of the county building staging plan based on the facility space needs study, as well as the continued implementation of our Davie County Comprehensive Plan and construction of regional water expansion facility to align and complement our county strategic plan.
This budget also includes our continued investment in education for Davie County children through our interlocal agreement with Davie County Schools. We're happy to report this is our eighth consecutive year of a current expense increase to Davie County Schools. That interlocal agreement expires in the next fiscal year, so we will be doing a lot of reviewing of that to see how we can improve that interlocal agreement. We also are including the continued investment in secondary education for Davie County citizens through increased contribution to Davie Davidson Community College, alignment with Davie Economic Development Commission's Strategic Plan, workforce development through Ignite Davie Promise and Davie Works, the cognition museum, economic development centers, and next-gen leadership. It also includes improving our safe and healthy community with enhanced access to health services through our expanding our convalescent care transportation by adding a crew, community paramedicine, and our partnership with our federally qualified health center. Also, we have included funding for Yvette Transportation Services to our county residents, which includes supporting the Moxville Circulator Route, as well as increased fire department rescue funding, the nine-hundred-and-three thousand dollars that we're all familiar with discussing tonight. We have completed the, we're happy to report, we completed the fire ordinance, the fire ordinance. And we've also implemented the fireworks reporting software for all departments that interfaces with our new CAD system. That was voted on for the, by the fire chiefs. They chose that software. We've completed training on that. We also paid for the training, as well as eighty fields off licenses paid for by the county for the fire departments, as well as including funding to Squad 81 to assist multiple departments during the day, where they have reported inadequate coverage at some departments during the weekdays, as well as our grant administrator to assist fire departments with grants. And also, our mobile radio updates for fire and rescue department radios purchased by the county in fiscal year 2016.
Investment in our environment through cooperative extension, the forestry service, Davie Soil and Water Conservation, and Davie County Watershed Improvement Commission. Continued investment in senior and veteran services programs, and we are expanding the senior center programming to the Brock. That starts in July, and we're excited about that. Funding for cultural arts and tourism partner agencies. Operational increases to support new county park and the partnership with Twin Cities Soccer for Field Turf. The contribution to Lake Louise Park for maintenance and increased funding for community recreation centers. This will be reviewed and allocated by the Recreation and Parks Advisory Board. So, that was the increase from forty thousand to eighty thousand dollars for this year.
So, Commissioners, so tonight, you know, we're presenting to you the proposed budget for 21-22. But at the same time, as we're looking at one year, we also, it's also conducive and helpful to look out at future years and eat some of the other issues that we will face as we move forward in the next few years. So, I'll just want to provide, you know, a brief synopsis of some of those items. First of all, increased need for teacher supplements, you know, trying to stay competitive with the region. We've had a nice conversation, very productive conversation with board education, and we look for continued advancement there. Secondly, school capital needs, as always, a concern. Interlocal agreements for schools will expire, as has been mentioned, so that's something that we will be, again, to work with, with the Davie County school staff. The detention center construction, we've got the RFQ process as it's moving forward, and look forward to moving ahead with that project. Healthcare premium risk, you know, we've got the increase this year of eight percent. That's something that we need to keep a close eye on, and that's certainly something that, you know, we want to get that back to several years of no increase. But there's always that opportunity. Continued retirement contribution increases, as I mentioned before, we're in the third of three years for increases that the state treasurer's office has implemented. But he has talked about there may be additional needs as well. So, you know, we anticipate some future announcements about that as also. Fire and rescue capital needs, that's been discussed. Economic Development Commission, so there were some seed funds that were provided to EDC a number of years ago. Those resources have been put to good use, bringing jobs and investment to Davie County. And there is some, a need to replenish some of those funds, and so that's something that will need to be considered in future years as well. And as we've discussed before, just trying to stay competitive with our region, with wages, trying to maintain our great staff that we've got and to keep them here, just increase market wage pressures for our employees. So, Commissioners, that concludes our presentation tonight, and we certainly will be glad to take any questions that you have. And again, we thank you for your investment. We thank you for your leadership as we move forward through this process. Thank you.
Okay. So, this is a public hearing, so one more time, Mr. Vogler.
Chair, as announced, this is the day and hour of the public hearing pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes. This board is now conducting a public hearing of fiscal year 2022 county budget. Do you notice that the public hearing was advertised, ran in the local newspaper, general circulation? The county is required by law, as noted in the notice of the public hearing, including the agenda fact. Further, a copy of the FY 2022 budget proposal was available for public inspection at Davie County Administrative Offices, 123 South Main Street, Moxville, for the period described by the North Carolina General Statutes. So, I would ask that all who wish to comment at this public hearing to come forward to the podium, state your name, and then comment on the proposed budget. Mr. Chair, seeing no one come forward, I now turn the public hearing back over to you as board chair to close the public comment section of this public hearing. Provide the board the opportunity to discuss among yourselves what action, if any, you wish to take with regards to this matter.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vogler. All right, this time, I'll turn it back over to the board to discuss. I know we've had one-on-one meetings with finance department. We've had a work session, and I want to thank the staff for all their efforts. And a couple of highlights, I mean, I do think it is worthy of pointing out or reiterate that there's not been a tax increase in this county for operations since '06. And, you know, I don't know about your household, but in my household, there's been substantial increases since '06. So, I am proud of that for the county. Our staff works really hard. We get, they produce a lot with not, with limited resources. And we have got their wage. We did, in my opinion, a good job getting the wages up to be competitive. And that is one thing this board has prioritized, is to make sure that we stay competitive to retain our folks. But those are a couple of things I would, and the third thing I would point out, and it goes back to our staff, is they have did a great job in, in embracing the wellness program and to not, we're self-insured for health insurance, and to not only have an 8% increase over six years, that is unheard of. And we have saved a tremendous amount of money. The county saved a tremendous amount of money with that. And also, that coupled with the wellness center that you can go get visits, doctors' visits at. So, I want to thank everyone for that, and those would be my comments.
I agree. I thank all the staff members for your work. I know it's a lot of work. Thank you to Brian Myers and the Tax Office for all the reval work that you've had to do. I know you all have been really busy, and that that's a big deal, and we thank you very much. There's always a few things, and if you know me, you know what they are in the budget that give me tremendous heartburn. But this year, I am ecstatic that we have $903,000 to give to fire and rescue, because I've kind of been begging for some money. And that, I hope that in our joint discussion, that we will come to an agreement that the majority of that will go to the underfunded departments that have been waiting so long for some help. And the only other thing that I kind of hope for, and I've already mentioned it to Mr. Bone, is I think there's a couple pieces, pieces of equipment that I would have liked for EMS to be able to get, and hopefully, in the long run, they'll still get them because they're life-saving pieces of equipment. So, but overall, just thank you all for your, for all your efforts.
I would chime in to say that, again, like Commissioner Renegan Finney has already, already said that, you know, to tackle what we're tackling and provide a half-cent property tax decrease is, is feeding itself. Very proud of our staff and our Finance Department and all the directors for what you're doing with performance-based budgeting. And it's really, it's really showing off. And also, very proud to have a $903,000 increase to the fire and rescue folks and all you guys showing up tonight. And this is a huge thing that you've been battling for years, and we appreciate what you do. But I can tell you one thing, this probably won't be the last thing, and we need to, we need to work together to find more revenue streams to help you more, and I look forward to working with you guys and girls. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would take the opportunity to point out that the spending increases that we are having this year or proposing this year are all being paid for by the property owners of Davie County. And somewhere, I see we have a future needs list here. Somewhere along the line, I would like to see that paid for instead of just by the property owners, a quarter-cent sales tax, which would be paid for by everyone in the county, whether they own property or not, and those that even pass through the county. That would go a long way toward funding the needs that we have with the detention center, the fire and rescue squads, all the things that we're going to need in the future.
All right. Any other comments? Seeing none, entertain a motion to approve the budget as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
A second.
Motion and a second. Any further comments? Seeing none. All in favor, raise your hand. That is approved. Five-zero. Thank you. All right. I realize we're getting long, but we got yet another public hearing. And this one is on the capital improvement plan. We've already heard a little bit about that in the prior presentation. But so, I'll ask Ms. West.
It's me again. I'll be brief, well, as brief as possible here, because we've seen this before, thank you, in April. So, this is the capital improvement plan that we're proposing for fiscal year '21 through '26. So, this is our five-year capital improvement plan. Just as a refresher, this and more information is in Davenport's report, Davenport and Company. So, I've gotten this from page 14 of their report. This can be found on our website again, under Finance, under the Capital Improvement Plan page. We have identified 6.3 cents of property tax for our capital improvement plan, 10.8 cents of property tax as well that we had increased in fiscal year 2016 again for the issuance of the 2015 GO bonds to pay for the new Davie High School. The tax rate is assumed to be reduced over time to fund only the high school debt. We also have $300,000 of restricted sales tax for school debt through at least fiscal year 2025 related to the Ellis Middle School debt. That's in the current interlocal agreement with Davie County Schools, as well as a $200,000 school contribution for debt service that comes out of lottery funds. Again, that is also in the schools' interlocal agreement. So, a few things, there are three ratios that we look at in the CIP related to debt. So, this is our 10-year payout ratio. So, we want this to be at least 55%. So, this means at least 55% of our principal on any debt is paid down over a 10-year period. We're well above that currently. The second ratio is our debt-to-assess-value ratio. We want it to be under 2.5%. Currently, we're at 1.5%, and we projected that over, you know, the next 30 years or so. But the third one is the one that we talked about before, our debt service-to-expenditures ratio. This is a ratio that's going to have some pressure once the debt service for our detention center we're proposing comes online. There's assumptions, with any plan, there's assumptions put in, so as assumptions change over time, hopefully, what we see here will improve. But it will probably be above 15% for several years for our detention center debt. You know, again, I know that Mitch from Davenport has told us that the story behind it is very important. It's important that the board has been informed, and I know that you guys know all about this. We've talked about it several times anytime we talk about CIP, that this, this ratio is a particular one that's going to have the pressure. So, on to our general fund capital improvement plan. This is our, these are the projects that we're proposing. That includes some for this current fiscal year 2021. It's getting ready to end at the end of this month. So, you can see those projects here. I'm happy to answer any questions related to these projects. Again, you know, we're finishing up the Government Center. That's pretty much done for this fiscal year. The Community College, we're doing $3.8 million to hopefully help them with a new building. Our fiber radio project are for things that I mentioned before, as well as radio replacements over the next several years. Our space study implementation, what these dollars reflect are mostly to do with the current Health and Human Services buildings. A little bit of work at the admin building that's wrapping up, as well as the hospital demolition. We have some funds set aside for parking lot repaving. We've identified some buildings that need parking lots repaved, as well as a big project of our detention center. We've started planning a bit for that. That'll go on next year, and then in 2023 will be the bulk of construction. So, we have some network upgrades for the sheriff in the out-years, as well as some improvements, which are mostly elevators for the courthouse, as well as, I think, some HVAC for the Davie Community Park. We're having to front-load some costs for the detention center, so that's what that $2.2 million represents. Once we get debt funded, we can repay ourselves for the $600,000 and the $1.6 million that were spent in for the general fund. This just has the details, the detailed descriptions here of our projects, so just let me know if you have any questions.
All right. Thank you, Ms. West. Appreciate all the effort on this. We have seen it a couple of times, but anyway. We will go ahead and go to the public hearing, so Mr. Vogler.
Chairs of the House, this is the day and hour of the public hearing pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes. This board is conducting a public hearing on the county capital improvement plan to identify and prioritize capital projects so a specific amount of time and financing choices can be used as part of the Davie County budget. I would ask all who wish to comment at this public hearing, come forward to the podium, state your full name for the board, and comment on the proposal. Mr. Chair, seeing no one come forward, I would now turn the public hearing back over to you as Board Chair to close. I'm sorry. Line by the lines. I'm sorry if you would come to the podium.
Jason Keaton, Chief of Weimar Davie Fire Department. One thing that's concerning in this project details here is I see nothing with exception of the fiber radio systems that's in for capital improvements for the fire departments within this county. There's nothing in there. And for the past seven years, we've put budgets out, and in that has got capital improvement items. I know each fire department inside of this county has got capital improvement needs that need to be met. Our, ourself is the building project, number one. And I do find it concerning that there's nothing put in there from, for now to 2026 that concerns within the fire stations and rescue squads. Nothing. So, I do find that disheartening that that's not been mentioned inside of this budget proposal. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to come forward to comment on the proposed CIP, county structures? Seeing no one else come forward, I would now turn the public hearing back over to you as Board Chair to close the public comments section of this public hearing, providing the board the opportunity to discuss yourself, among yourselves, what, if any, action you wish to take with regards to the CIP.
Thank you, Mr. Vogler. So, turn it over to the board for comments or action.
Mr. Chairman, based on Chief Keaton's comments, I hope that as we get into the process, perhaps when we meet here in the next week or so, we can look at some of those issues. And I think there's always, if we have, if we have capital needs for fire EMS, we can address those in, in-out years, hopefully. But we do need, kind of like we were talking about the vision of the economic development, I mean, we need to have some sort of, some sort of vision of what, what's out there, what we need, and certainly look at addressing some of those needs as we can.
No, I totally agree, and going back to my previous statement, though, is we've got to find other funding mechanisms to help aid that, and I think Commissioner Pointe Dexter also threw in on that, as well as some other things. And so, we look forward to working with you guys and girls to, to think outside the box, especially you working hard to get these ISO ratings down and showing citizens, saving them some money on their, their insurance. Hopefully, that's going to go a long way, so we can step up to a plate for you.
And just for the benefit of the board and the benefit of the group, this is something that's refreshed annually. Ideally, we like to do this in the fall, so our plan is for now is to take another look. You know, we see, we say every year, but it's going to be probably, you know, four months from now when we start to refresh it again. And this is something that we plan to look at, you know, every year after that. So, I don't want anyone to think that this is, you know, five years, this is our plan, and we don't do another plan for five years. That's something that we update annually.
And we, as a board, I know that the budgets that were shared with us last week, a lot of them have the capital needs included, so we need to give those a look at before that meeting as well, so we'll be familiar.
Any other comments? All right. Entertain a motion to adopt the capital, entertain a motion to adopt the capital improvement plan as presented.
So moved.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, raise your hand. That is approved. Thank you. All right. We will go to the consent agenda. Does, I know one thing on the consent agenda is the resolution for the Fund Balance Restoration Plan, and Ms. West has already alluded to that. Do we have any questions about that? Any more questions? All right. With that, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have one quick question about the consent agenda. Concerning the architecture firm for the detention center, has this firm designed the detention center before? Do you know, Sheriff?
Brad, you want to speak later?
Brad, whoever wants to speak to it. Good.
It's, it's their specialty.
Awesome. Okay. That's what I wanted to know. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
If I may, with, with that being said, it's their specialty. They've done a lot of jails, but they are very attentive to our specific needs. It's not like they have a cookie-cutter plan. I mean, there are things that have been, features that are successful in, in other communities, but they do have suggested there will be very instrumental in listening to us and assessing what our specific needs are.
Any other comments, questions about the consent agenda? Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Blakely. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, raise your hand. Okay, that does, that is approved. All right, we will move to the county manager's report. Mr. Bone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I just want to mention that as of May 27th, Davie County is a yellow county in North Carolina's County Alert System for COVID-19, which means we still have significant community spread. Yellow counties have a case rate of between 20 and 100 new cases per capita in 14 days, with at least 21 cases in 14 days. Some, let's see, some good news, as of June 4th, though, Davie County was down to 24 active cases. So, that is really great news, great to see that trend continue going downward. According to North Carolina's COVID-19 Dashboard, 43% of the Davie County population has received at least one vaccine, and 40% have received full vaccinations. And that 40% is consistent with the state average, so that's, we're being consistent with the state. Do just want to remind everyone that COVID vaccinations are available by appointment at the Davie County Health and Human Services. Interested folks can call 336-753-7, excuse me, 6779. Let me repeat, 336-753-6779 for an appointment. Due to ongoing concerns about Cardinal's innovations, its plan of actions, issues in progress, and service delivery, the Board of Commissioners met on June 2nd and passed a resolution directing me as county manager to begin the process of disengagement from Cardinal Innovations Healthcare, our current local management entity, managed care organization. On June 1st, the day prior to that, it was announced that Cardinal Innovations and Via Health will be consolidating by July 1st of 2022. Davie County wants to ensure that the consolidation of Cardinal Innovations Healthcare and Via Health does not perpetuate the challenges experienced under Cardinal. So, Davie County has communicated its intent to disengage from Cardinal, effective no later than June 30th of 2022, consistent with applicable states and statutes and regulations. Davie County received its first installment of the American Rescue Plan funds on June 1st. These funds will be part of the budget amendments, or they are a part of the budget amendments approved tonight. And the second installment is expected to be received in the next 12 months. The water supply regionalization projects are proceeding well. A survey of the water treatment plant site has been completed. A survey of the water treatment plant site has been completed. Survey field work for the transmission mains is ongoing. The East Davie Sewer Project is nearing completion. The transition to the new phone system for all county offices is proceeding. We expect to have all departments migrated to the new system by the end of August. The DMV office will be closed from June 14th to the 28th here at the Brock for floor replacement. And folks with appointments can, I think, are being directed to Davidson County for, to that DMV office. June is National Safety Month, and county staff is involved in various safety trainings during the month of June, including mandatory CPR and AED training for all employees. At Davie County Community Park, the splash pad is open daily now for the summer, and it's summer specialty camp registrations are open and filling up quickly. The first movies in the park was held on October, excuse me, on May 28th, and that was very successful. The next movie will be on Friday, June 25th, at 8:00 PM, and that will be a free event. The first summer concert series on, on May 29th, featuring Love and Theft, was an outstanding show, despite rain for most of the day. We have several other events coming up with the Davie County Recreation and Parks Department. First, want to mention the Food Chart Rodeo that will be held on Saturday, June 19th, from 11:00 AM until 8:00 PM. There will be live entertainment all day at the amphitheater. The next summer concert will be the band Two Mice Sylvia on Saturday, July 3rd, at 6:30. There will be a small fireworks display after the show. And then the July 4th fireworks. As you know, in 2020, COVID-19 crushed our plans for a Saturday, July 4th fireworks. And we're proud to say that we'll have a special fireworks-only display at Ridge Park on Sunday, July 4th. That concludes my report. Mr. Chairman.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Bone? Thank you for that. All right. Now we move to old business. We have one item on the agenda this evening, and that's revisiting the Davie County Parks and Rec alcohol policy. And I will call on Mr. Moore to speak to that, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since the last board meeting, we've had a few meetings with Sheriff Hartman, Mr. Vogler, and Mr. Bone to tidy up some of the ambiguity that was found within the policy, remove those plans, remove those, some of that ambiguity. The advisory board actually listened to some of the board comments, and we added, they proposed adding specific areas of where alcohol could be sold or consumed or purchased on the site, which I thought was a good idea. The stadium was in question, so we removed that. So a lot of good introduction, introduction to designated areas of where those places could be, and tidied up, removed one section, and in doing so, add the sold to the policy, which removed the entire ambiguity of what was in the policy from last board meeting. So that is all I have. I'd be glad to entertain any questions that you may have.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Moore? Mr. Vogler, you're good with all the changes from a legal perspective, I would assume?
I am.
And the sheriff?
And, and just a reminder, as a motion is presented, it's both for, it's mainly for the ordinance, which includes the policies. So it's more or less an ordinance change of 95.069 within the Davie County Recreation Park code ordinances.
All right. So we have the adopted policy ordinance before us. Entertain a motion, or entertain action on that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, raise your hand. That passes five-zero. Thank you. All right. Do we have any new business that come before us this evening? We'll move to commissioner's comments, and I'll call on Mr. Poindexter.
I'd just like to thank county staff for all the hard work they have done on our budget and on the audit as well. And like to thank everybody for coming out tonight and either expressing your views or supporting those that did. And I hope to come back next month soon. Thank you.
Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One of the great things about being an American and being in Davie County is we can have civil discussion and debate. And I tell you, I really appreciate everybody coming out tonight and showing us a great example of that. The, just congratulations to all of our graduates. And I would be remiss to say, one of the exciting things about being a graduate in Davie County now is our Ignite Davie program. This, this program is saving parents and families thousands of dollars in tuition. And I, I mean, it's just an amazing, amazing program and a great, I won't say selling point for Davie County, but it is something that is special that Davie County businesses, citizens, governmental entities are doing for our kids, not just for their education, but for their future. Keeping them out of debt, coming out of school as best we possibly can. And I think that's one of the best graduation gifts we, as a, as a community, can give to our, our kids. And so congratulations to them, congratulations to parents and grandparents. And thank you all for all you do to make this, in my opinion, the greatest place in this great nation to raise a family. Thank you.
Ms. Finney.
Again, I just thank everyone for coming out tonight and sharing your opinion. As always, I thank you to all of our first responders who keep us safe, who protect us, protect our lives and property. You know how much I appreciate you so much. Along with all of the Fourth of July events at the park, don't forget the Coolme Tractor Parade, July 5th, I believe it's at 10:00 AM. That's loads of fun. If you've never been, you need to go. And Mr. Coontz, thank you so much for mentioning the War Memorial. I, too, was ecstatic that that work was finally completed. It has been a little bit of a long time coming, waiting on those lights to show up from back order. And also, I share that joy with you. I'm so glad that it was put back together, so.
Mr. Blakely.
I'd just like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. And I really appreciate all the staff, department heads, and all the, all the members that have put tireless hours into this budget. Again, we're tackling a lot of amazing things in this county, paying for it as we go, decreasing the property tax rate. I mean, those are all things that are, we should all be very proud of. So thank you very much.
I appreciate everyone coming out. Again, we're getting long, so I will try to be brief. But the, I don't know how many of you folks read the once-and-say-on paper, but yesterday, above the fold, the median income of Davie County is 60, over $60,000, which it compared 10, 10 counties. And the closest to us was Guilford. So I was, I am proud of that, and we're going to continue to be an attractive place for people to come to. And we just need to keep working together to make that happen. I look forward to meeting with the fire commission or whoever's going to represent the fire service, because, you know, you guys have proved you need money, and we're going to take a step towards fixing that. But we also understand that there's some other work to do there. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Motion and a second. All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you.